We have our monthly Board of Alderman meeting this morning. I want to thank everybody for coming. And I would like at this point to ask everybody to put their phone on.
So I think that means we're talking.
I would like everybody to put their phones on silent, if you don't mind, please, for the duration of the meeting. And we're going to go ahead and get started. And Alderman Pladdle is going to do our invocation today.
Bless this town and remain a beautiful and friendly place to live. We pray this board makes fair and informed decisions this morning. We also pray that our police officers, firefighters, and members of our armed services here and around the world remain safe as they risk so much for our security. We also pray that our town be spared the ravages of hurricanes and other natural disasters, and that everyone associated with the town remains safe and secure. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberity, and justice for all.
Okay, with that, I am going to ask for an approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, so I have a first.
Second.
Second, okay. Any changes to the agenda?
I have one request on the finance report. Could we pull that off the consent agenda and put it on the regular agenda? I have some things I want to talk about to get a consensus from the board on something going forward. It won't be something that the finance person has to answer today, but just some questions about the report.
So do we want to request to pull it over under continuing business after the fire chief?
Yep.
Anything else?
Mayor, I'd like to also pull destruction of records off the consent agenda and move that to continuing business as well. This is something, you know, we haven't had a town clerk in a while, and this would just be a review of what that policy is and how we've started that process.
Okay, after the crosswalks?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, we have some requested changes. Do we have a motion to approve an updated agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve an updated agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Oops, sorry.
Okay, then we are.
So do you want me to... I'm just trying to make notes. It'll be at the end of the three that are on the continuing business.
No, so I have police as A, under continuing business, police as A, fire as B, finances C, crosswalk is D, and the public record destruction is E.
That's fine, because I think we'll probably take more discussion items on the crosswalk. I don't think there'll be a whole lot of discussion. Thank you.
All right, so we are going to move on to the manager's report.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. First and foremost, I would like to say welcome to Mr. Brady Golden, who's with us this morning. If you can stand up, say hello.
Hi.
He is our new planner one.
Yay!
We're happy to have him on board. He's officially started in his role, and he is a certified zoning officer as well as a certified flood plane manager.
Awesome.
Most recently, he's worked for the town of Oak Island and has also worked as an intern for Beaufort County, North Carolina. So very well-versed in coastal management issues and operations. We're very happy to have him on board, so welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Also, the accountant one job description and budget amendment have been prepared and provided under the consent agenda. Beach projects and operations. Is there a question?
No.
Also, oh, sorry. Also, our finance officer is scheduled to come on board as well later this month.
Good job.
So that person should be attending a scheduled November board meeting. Beach projects and operations. I reported at the last meeting about the beach access matting that was placed down at the Jeffries Beach Access. I've received a lot of feedback on that initiative. Moving forward at this time with securing permitting for the Jenkins Way Access, and that's at 1294 New River Inlet Road. PTC.
I do have a question. Is that something that we also want to talk to the county about with their access there?
I believe they're already talking about that. I talked to their Public Works Director yesterday, who contacted me.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, there's some guy here from the county.
So, yes, did you write that down to him?
It's already on their radar.
Did you want to recognize the elected officials that are here today?
Well, I thought that was, I thought you were doing that under.
Oh, he is.
But of course, welcome Chairman Foster, who's here from Onslow County. It's always good to have you here, who also sits on our BICAC committee as well. Welcome. Beach projects and operations. PTC number eight, work continues on that project. We're still not officially funded from FEMA yet. We're still working through that process. We're still on pause from the last season on work that took effect May 2nd. Engineer Fran Way and I have both been in communication concerning the upcoming work plan that will resume operations on this project, which is a dune project. Once this is finalized, the project page, of course, will be updated, and an announcement will be made when we're officially moving forward with that project to resume.
So on, just on that, Alice, real quick.
I've gotten questions about it, you know, will I specifically be getting sand? And I think the point you're making is we don't quite know yet. We don't have Fran's updated work plan yet. So questions that we receive as a board, I typically send in to you. Is that what you want us to do?
Yes, that is the...
Thank you.
Yes, that's the correct procedure, yeah. Okay, Hurricane Umberto and Tropical Storm Amelda. Morning is September 25th, as I'm sure everybody is aware. We started posting information about the pending storms that became those two named storms. Updates have been provided daily. We are advising everyone at this time of the high rip current risks that we expect to be in place throughout this weekend. I mentioned at the last meeting that we're also working once again to schedule another hurricane community forum. This has been scheduled for October 9th at 6:30 PM. That announcement was made pretty much probably within a day or so after the last meeting, because that was already in progress. That will be held here at Town Hall. I will be there along with the National Weather Service, Onslow County Emergency Management, and our utility partners will be present as well to participate in that event.
Alice, do we know if after the next few days, whether Chris or any of the engineers are going to take a look, either with the drone or whatever, at the whole beach again?
We've, what we do is we, it's a common practice to do a survey that is pre-hurricane season at the onset, and we've had one, actually Onslow County assisted us with a survey where we did the conditions post the last storm. We're not doing one for this event at this time, because we just had one last, within the last month. So it's not needed at this time.
So will we have another survey before spring, or no?
It depends on, you know, how we proceed through the end of hurricane season. That's certainly going to, you know, decide on what we do going forward, but usually, you know, Chris, always, TI Coastal, I usually engage him as well to do a dashboard survey after any event to determine if we need to, the town needs to make that investment into a full-blown survey, which is quite expensive.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just follow up on that? I believe that maybe Chris can do this when he does this. I think you're only looking for reimbursement from FEMA if there is a storm, not just normal erosion, right? So I think that's your point.
Yeah, you have to reach thresholds that these type of storms do not anywhere near touch thresholds for a FEMA project.
Okay, I just want to make sure, and I think, you know, Chris can address that when he gets up.
So my concern was not for FEMA storm, but was for significant erosion that's happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's done.
Yeah.
Why don't you do it when you...
No, that's not really the time.
Yeah, let's stay on track.
Let's put the manager.
Communications, staff has been working on communications publication. It'll be going out soon on various initiatives and key dates to plan for regarding operations. October through the end of year is a very active time. I know a lot of people think that once summer is done, that we kind of slow down. We really don't. October 19th, Public Works will be facilitating the vegetative debris pickup. All vegetation must be placed roadside on or one week before this date. They'll do a one-sweep pickup, and pickup will occur throughout that week. So we ask that you have it placed at the curb on or before October 19th that morning. October 29th, I'm sorry, October 28th, GFL will be conducting the semi-annual fall bulk pickup. As, if you recall, this was worked into the new contract with GFL, so we'll now be providing a bulk pickup, which will take place two times a year, in the spring and the fall. I've had that scheduled for October 28th. I have a flyer that will be distributed that lists acceptable items.
So I get a bulk pickup on my birthday. Cool.
Happy birthday.
Alice, do individuals have to call, or it's just everybody can put things out?
And there are a list of acceptable items and a list of items that are not accepted, like construction debris. So anyone, any contractors doing projects, or that is not acceptable.
Okay.
October 22nd, happy to report that I was able to secure the sponsorship for a third annual Halloween event. That's the pet parade and costume contest held at Richard Peters Park. So thank you to them for sponsoring this event. Once again, it's a free event, open to everyone in the public, Richard Peters Park, so please mark your calendars and plan to join us. It's a really fun time. Entry fee is just, we just ask you if you can to bring a non-perishable item, and that's for Share the Table, who will be with us. That helps them. They're one of our community partners that we work with a lot, and it helps them out, especially this time of year when they're, they have a greater need. So we appreciate you supporting them. We also have a 50/50 cash raffle, where all proceeds go to Pause for Purpose, another one of our community partners that we work with each year. So another good cause. November 19th will be our fourth annual Christmas tree lighting. It's scheduled to be here at 6 o'clock PM here at Town Hall. Public Works has expanded, if you noticed, our deck out front to decide where the tree goes. That's been expanded this year, which will allow more room for families to gather around the tree for pictures. Coordinated with two Girl Scout troops this year, so we had one the past few years. We've got two this year. Troops number 4298 and troop number 203. They will be here serving hot cocoa. They'll also be selling some things set up to help with earning badges, so that'll be something new for this year as well. Sneed's Ferry Presbyterian Church Choir will be joining us again, and we'll have pictures, of course, with Santa cookies and face painting as well.
Excellent.
In 2024, if you recall, we entered an agreement with the iWorks software platform, and part of this platform is the citizen engagement practice. We're at the place right now where I'm comfortable with rolling that out, so you'll be seeing this coming out on live soon this month. That'll be finished by the end of the month. This will be a public portal and mobile application to allow citizens and internal customers, and internal customers, I mean staff, that allows them to submit issues, problems, or any requests from Public Works, and include photos and locations for those in the public if they see a pothole, or, just as an example, or vegetative overgrowth, anything of that nature, litter.
Flooding.
Flooding. We are finalizing a tutorial right now, Public Works is working on, and that'll be rolled out with the application announcement as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional questions for Ms. Darian? All right. The next item is an open forum. Do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, Madam Clerk, we have Kip Malcolm signed up.
Okay.
Good morning again. Good morning, Mayor, Board members, and neighbors. Kip Malcolm, 3102 Green Street. Want to share a quick, few reminders about some important dates coming up for the election. Tomorrow, right here, at 6:00 PM, we're going to have a candidate debate. And next week, October 7th, at 6:30 PM, the Chamber's hosting the candidate night here as well. Absentee voting starts October 3rd, with voter registration deadline is October 10th. Early voting runs starting October 16th through November 1st at the Onslow Board of Elections in Jacksonville, and they have one Saturday date, October 25th. Absentee ballot deadlines vary, but most are due November 4th, with the military and overseas ballots being due on November 13th. And obviously, full details are available on the county's website. So as we prepare for the upcoming election, I've continued to serve as the chairman on the Board of Adjustments, zoning Board of Adjustments, and as a reserve police officer. I've also been talking with residents, folks around town, about their concerns. And stuff that I'm starting to hear are the difficulty with hiring and retaining staff, questions about the financial management, and the need for stronger support for our town employees, so that they feel supported every day. These are issues that we must address with focus and accountability. Some folks may not know me yet, or everything I stand for, but I hope that you see that I'm engaged, and I'll remain engaged in every aspect of our community to ensure its success. When you hear someone say, "Don't vote for this candidate," or "Don't vote for that candidate" without any justification, ask them why. Without an explanation, I think it's purely political speak, and this is a nonpartisan election. Our town needs honest engagement between our leaders and residents. Hope that everyone gets out and votes, but I want to earn your vote. I also want to earn your trust. I work every day to support our residents.
Kip, I greatly appreciate, I greatly appreciate all the date information, but I just had a conversation with Mr. Struthers before the meeting about not campaigning during the board meetings.
Then all I'm encouraging people is to get out and vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know. And the other thing, I don't know who's doing the timer. Ricky, if you, does Ricky, do you do the timer?
Yeah, I have a pool of other timers.
That's okay. Anybody else?
There are no more signups.
Okay. Anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Okay?
Now we have these three minutes.
No, I know. Next time, Ricky, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. We don't have any public presentations and hearings. We've pulled two items out of the consent agenda, so do I have a motion to approve the remaining consent?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're going to move on to continuing business, and we're going to start with our police report.
Usually, I would have this current month up, but we just started today, so I don't have that one. So you'll have seen this last one. Like I had said last time, we had a pretty good summer, several accidents. We've had a few speeding complaints, and I would encourage everybody, if you want to complain about speeding in a certain area, we'll concentrate on that area. One of them was Seagull lately, and you notice there've been some vehicles up there doing radar. We also have some equipment we can put out and monitor that, so we'll do it in various locations now also. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
And, well, let's go around. Does anybody, Connie, let's start with you. Do you have any questions?
Did we need to do any major water rescues this summer?
That's fire.
Fire will probably cover that, but we also help them cover those, but knock on wood, we've had a great summer.
Thank you.
Alderman Benson.
No questions.
Mayor Proto.
I had written down what you just, what you just mentioned. I had three complaints on speeding on Seagull. Two were verbal yesterday, and one was an email that we probably all got.
Right.
But, yeah, people don't slow down to 20 there.
I don't think they know. Alderman Oshacki.
What you got to do is read the sign.
So from the Surf City line up to Town Hall, in the straightaways, we're already seeing it hit 50, 55. So I know we have signs. Can we start putting the sign out and moving the sign up, or doing something with signs to tell people to maintain the 45? Because they're already doing 55.
You're talking about our flash, our sign that comes up? I'll put it back out down there.
Can we just start, like, moving that around? Because the straightaway is where they're picking up real speed. Once you get up here and you got turns and everything, they're forced to slow down, but in the straightaway, they are just flying again.
I can place that out, and then I can give you a report on what it, the data that comes up.
All right, I appreciate that.
Alderman Grant.
I had Tom's issue, which I got the same email from people in Seagull. And the interesting thing, I think we'll be talking to our Public Works guy, because there's a potential sidewalk going in down there as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, fire. Do we have any openings right now? Any staff vacancies?
Actually, I have one person that's leaving. He's been offered a position with a insurance company doing accident investigations, so he'll be leaving. But I just finished an interview on that one, so I should not have an opening coming up.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Morning.
Morning.
Did you work nights last night?
Some of us have been up. As you can see, per the report, our numbers are starting to decline, which is a good sign.
Rick, does he have a report?
It's in the...
No, why not? For those that are here to look at the screen, though, thank you.
Fifty, we ran 47 calls over the last month. Fifty-seven percent were fire rescue-related, 43% were EMS-related. That's a 29-day stamp shot of last month, so, from the last meeting to this meeting, so, which is good. The numbers are starting to trend down, so. If you all have any questions about that, I've got one thing.
Go ahead.
October 5th through 12th is Fire Prevention Week. This year's slogan is "Charge into Fire Safety with Lithium Ion Batteries," because of all the e-bikes, electric skateboards and everything, and they're creating problems for us in the fire service. I encourage everyone to go to the NFPA website to learn more about lithium ion safety, especially during that week. And then on October 11th, we will be set up from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Richard Peters Park, doing a Touch the Truck Lithium Ion Battery Safety, a little impromptu, just kind of get some information out.
The 11th, from 10 to 1?
10 to 1, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah, let's go around again.
Connie, anything?
Did you have any major rescues you had to do this year? Water rescues?
Still early, but nothing major.
Thank you.
Alderman Benson.
Yeah, I just want to praise the first responders in your department. They have done a great job, and I actually had to take advantage of their service 2:00 AM one night a couple of weeks ago, so, thank you.
Mayor Proto.
No questions, just a comment. Thanks for the good work all summer long, all year long. Appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you.
Alderman Oshacki.
So on the banner on the webpage, I didn't see the Touch the Truck event, so maybe you want to add it there?
It's going out in the communications that we're releasing this week.
Okay, all right. And can we add it there as well?
On the, yeah, it'll be on the front page.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then during Fire Prevention Week and any time during the year, if people have concerns about their smoke alarms and things, are you guys available to come in and take a look and do a survey, or help any homeowner in that way?
Oh, absolutely. We go out, we do smoke detector surveys and stuff for people now. We go out and change batteries and stuff. We will, if they have new smoke detectors, we'll install them.
Okay.
If they can't afford them, we will provide them.
Okay.
So we do stuff like that. We come out and help people with their escape plans when they call. So, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We're currently doing all that.
And is it still the rule of thumb, like, smoke detectors, you know, the battery ones over 10 years old, they're not any good anymore?
So your new smoke detectors are sealed, and the batteries are good for 10 years, so at 10 years, they will start to expire.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a couple of quick ones. I've seen a lot of non-R vehicles on with lights flashing. Are we getting a lot of, are those counting, like, the EMS stuff? Is that, I mean, are you seeing any, I mean, are they helping us on island? And then the follow-up is, how many off-island stuff did you help? It's Turkey Creek that you had helped, right?
Yes, yes. Well, we go to Turkey Creek, Hallyridge, Surf City, Topsol.
It's a coordinating...
We have a mutual aid agreement, so they, I mean, I can't give you exact numbers how much we go to them versus them come to us. But, yeah, I mean, Turkey Creek comes to us. They were here the other night for the alarms we had during the storm.
That was my question.
Yes, sir. So, yeah, they come, Surf City comes.
Okay, that's what I saw, that's what my question was.
As well as EMS, so.
Right. Thanks, Tom.
I have one other question. I've gotten complaints from citizens with electric bikes now on the beach going fast. Do we know if we have any restrictions on electric bikes on the beach?
Ah, that's...
That's the police chief.
Okay, so 10 miles an hour, 15 miles an hour on the beach with an electric bike. We might have to look into that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we can just make that as a note. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
I think we're going to have somebody else if that keeps up.
Now we...
Oh, wait, I'm coming here. Yes, so finance is you.
And this is nothing, it has to be answered today, just some stuff that I noted in the finance report that frankly didn't make sense to me. One is... One is, when I looked at the, what was it at? Let me just pull it up. If you look at item number four, okay, on the investment income, we're showing one million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, thirty-two dollars and seventy-six cents over budget. Unless we've got two hundred million dollars in cash, that's not possible because the budget's only a month old. I'm assuming that is the cumulative amount, which brings me to my point on this. It would be nice, if you look at that, it talks about the phase four that we underspent by two point eight and then we've also have interest, so we have a lot of money. And I pulled up the, it's actually gonna be a question, I think, for our council. Hold on, hang on a second, let me just pull up the statute. We oughta have maybe Council, Chip, take a look under, under the section that talks about grantees. This is the statute. It's GS one forty-three C six dash twenty-three J. I'm sure everybody's familiar with that. I wasn't. "Grantees can keep interest earned but must use those funds for the same purpose as the grant." We have funds we haven't spent and we have interest that we have. And I think it would be helpful to know and maybe you can work with our beach engineer to find out what the same purposes mean. Because if we're doing beach planning going forward, we need to know, do we have to put that into four? Do we have to put that into the beach or whatever? But I think in terms of planning going forward, when you're talking about that, that many millions of dollars for us being available, we need to find out what we can use that for as part of our plan. So it's just something for us to figure out.
And I, I think that that's probably most appropriately directed back to our town manager to.
No, no, I agree. Yeah, I don't, I don't want a study done now. We've got a new finance person coming in. That's gonna be something for, for you, if you would take a look at that, because I'm gonna put it on the agenda for next. I didn't, I didn't want that to be, because that's gonna take some time to put that information together.
And I.
Can you just repeat that? One forty-three say that? I can forward it to you. I could just forward it to you. I just made a copy of it. And, but like I said, it's, I mean, the verbiage behind it was placing grant funds in a high-interest savings account would be permissible, which is what we're doing, okay? But a brokerage account or investing funds not allowed, investing grant funds would not be appropriate as these funds were intended to be spent in a proper manner. All I'm saying is, I think it would be very helpful for us as a board to understand what we can use that money for, everything else. I don't believe, my reading of it, we have to give it back, but you're talking about almost four million dollars of funds that we have. That would be a nice amount to have for going forward. So, and then, again, I'm not asking for a decision today, because that's, that would take some information, I'm studying going forward. The second thing is, and she put in here, which I thought was good, on item six, which is the fire station, I keep getting questions about where we are, and she even talks in here about how it's past the completion date. I think it would be helpful for us to have a look at what we originally agreed to pay, what the bid was. We've done a lot of change orders on that. If we could have just something showing us, because when I looked online, I looked that we did, November, the bid was for six million, one hundred and two thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. But when I look at her report, we're well over seven million dollars right now. And so the question becomes, can we just, I like to see what, I think as a board, the consensus to that, it would be nice for us, I think, to see what that looks like, because that's a question I get all the time from people is, how late is it? What's the cost? Everything else, all right? And so looking at those numbers, I think would be helpful for us as a board. Did you wanna say something?
Yeah, so to that point, we have a projects tab on the webpage where we could just put a small spreadsheet or some kind of numbers there that show where we are financially with the project as well as progress.
No, I'm fine with that. But I guess what I would like, if it's a consent, I'm gonna put it on the agenda, I hope the consents would be there. I would like to have it explained to us before we post it.
Yes.
Okay, because there, you know, the questions I had are about, you know, our interest costs and those type of things. And if you want, when I send him the statute, if you want, Alexis, I'm sure you're making, we'll have the questions and stuff. It's just there's some issues out there. I think Kip alluded to them, but the firehouse is a big issue everybody on this board has been asked about. Beach projects, we're looking at, and Chris is gonna talk about it, we got a lot of money that's gonna be spent on the beach in the next year. It'd be nice to know how much of that money we can use and where we can use it. Would be very helpful. And I think I had one other small item. Oh, this will actually relate to Mr. Foster. We just got five hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ten cents from you for the fire tax. Thank you. That's in the financial report, so maybe you timed it so you could be here for that, so that's all I had.
All right, then we're gonna do, the next is the crosswalk. You were A. You're after that one. So if Mr. Huckabee could come up from Public Works? Good morning.
Good morning.
Does that shirt have a volume control?
No.
Just to make sure everybody sees me. Pending any questions on the, on the report itself specifically, I'd just like to address the, the overall findings. Make sure I have all my things in order. So recommended crosswalk locations of those submitted, there were one, two, three, four, five, six total sites. County accesses, beach access one and two. The intersection right out here in front of Town Hall, Island Drive and New River Inlet Road, Eleventh Avenue, Seagull Lane and the Surf City Campground area were the proposed sites based off of my initial inspections and surveys on the screen. I don't know if you guys have it on yours or not.
Yep, it's on.
Got a Google, Google Earth map where I plotted out the recommended sites and locations to answer any questions or at least give you a visual on the where behind the, the sites that are being suggested. The first one listed here is Surf City Campgrounds. Distance to the nearest existing intersection is over two point eight miles. So, so this would fill a gap between a current crosswalk at Knolls Park and our southernmost boundary to the Surf City limit. There's no crosswalk in between those two locations at this time. Yes, sir. So, so pedestrian traffic demands, high demand, especially during the heavier seasons when tourism peaks, reduces a large service gap. That's my justification and is a major access point for, for families and, and people visiting. The next one would be Eleventh Avenue. All right, Eleventh Avenue, next closest existing recommended crosswalk is just over three quarters of a mile. And that's, again, the Knolls Park is the closest one for the existing crosswalks. Moderate to high residential corridor, is a very large complex across the street. I don't know if.
Yeah, that's not Eleventh.
That's not Eleventh. That is.
That's down at the county.
Oh, that's beach, the beach access. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I believe that's listed as beach access two. My apologies. Closest access to that for a crosswalk is greater than a half mile.
Yeah.
Very high pedestrian demand, major public access point. One of the highlights to beach access is one and two is the potential, I'm glad we have county representation here, is there, there are several programs and grants in existence that I think might, might be worth looking into for, for a town in terms of the, specifically for NC DOT, the Spot Safety Projects and the Highway Safety Improvement Program are two of them, that between both programs, there's about a hundred and eighty active projects on, on state, state-owned roads. And a large portion of those, specifically in Onslow County, are crosswalk related. So I think there's, there's always room to ask, because the answers always know if we don't. So that, that would be beach access two. Moving on, this would be the Eleventh Avenue access, again, large amount of foot traffic from that complex across the street on the sound side. Reduces that lengthy gap. One thing of note before we get into the, the central and northern part of the town is, again, that, that southern area, there just no crosswalks currently exist. Several markers for pedestrian traffic, but no actual striped or signed crosswalks. So just a, a key, key point to make for that. So the New River Inlet Road and Island Drive right out here, behind me actually, in front of Town Hall, that's proposed primarily due to the large amount of bike traffic that I've observed. Took me several days to complete a north to south assessment of the city streets and crosswalks. And it was unfortunately, I would say, during the tail end of the busy season. So my estimates in terms of May, June, July is, the, the volume that I observed would probably be much higher. And I OAC, bike enthusiasts out there.
Yep.
Trying to get their workout in, and that's a major intersection that they, they have to navigate as a hazard because there's no safe space to cross. So just something to propose from there. It is, it is about a half mile from the current beach access crosswalk at thirty-four, the Jeffries lots. So there is one within a near vicinity, but I think due to pedestrian traffic and usage, that's basically the main entry and exit points for the north end of town, it would be well suited to install a crosswalk there. This would be beach access one, I believe. That screen's hard to read from here. I didn't bring my glasses, I apologize. Again, county-owned, very high demand. I believe at one point I, I did a ad hoc calculation based off of the vehicles that were parked there. You know, and I don't know the averages statistically for how many ride together when they visit the town. But based off the amount of vehicles that were there, I was estimating about four to five hundred crossings a day. So that's just something to kinda keep in the backs of our, our minds based off of how many are jumping in cars and, and coming to visit the town.
That lot is always full.
It's always full.
It's always full.
It's free.
But it's always full, to your point about crosswalks and pedestrians.
These are two different locations on Seagull Lane. I don't really have an opinion as to, as to which one would be best for the town. Based off of my analysis, where New River Inlet Road executes a ninety-degree right and Seagull Lane continues, having observed, again, traffic patterns and residents, I, I would say that would be very well suited for, if not a four-way crosswalk. And I don't wanna step outside of the crosswalk discussion, the potential for a four-way stop might, might inhibit some of those high-speed travelers. But that one currently, again, on the northernmost end, it's about eight tenths of a mile from the nearest existing sidewalk. And again, dense housing on both sides, high demand and reduces a, a gap in, in options to, to cross the street. I think of the beach side accesses, there are several along New River Inlet Road. But on more of the Gulf, Seagull Lane side, Dolphin Shores, I believe, would be the next closest one. And there's a lot of residents that'll park north of Seagull Lane and walk down to Dolphin Shores because there's not a lot of public parking in that area. And tho- those are my recommended crosswalk site locations, if you have any questions or.
So I do, the only question I have, so for Seagull Lane, though, you were proposing one, not two?
Yes, I just, I just felt.
You just weren't sure which, where.
I just felt there's an option if, if the town wants to, both wouldn't be terrible. The, the northern end, there is a, a public park and given, given the communities on the, on the beach side, they would have to cross that and there's not a whole lot of good lighting late at night. So, so there's a potential there for doing both, but I figured, ask for two, hopefully get one.
Well, I guess my thought is on the, the northern side of it, I don't, I know Dolphin Shores does have a public beach access, but that parking lot in there is Dolphin Shores parking lot?
Yes, ma'am.
So I don't, I don't think people are gonna walk that far. I, there's nowhere for them to park down there.
So they, they do. I, I observe it, I'm on the north end probably at least once per day.
Where are they parking, on the side?
There's, there's, I haven't personally witnessed them parking. They could potentially be doing like a rental and walking down from a home.
Okay.
But there is a pretty decent amount of foot traffic moving south towards that Dolphin Shores access.
That makes sense. That makes sense.
So, comments?
Yeah, you can go that way, start that way.
All right. One is, nice job.
Thank you, sir.
Especially like the video. Couple, couple of things in here. I noticed in your study, which I liked, you talked about lighting.
Yes, sir.
I think we talked about that. You're talking about the lighting that we did at Villa, not putting up a light, correct?
I should've been a little bit more clear. It, I do have concerns with both. I've, I've received a few phone calls at Public Works since I've gotten here requesting street lighting, insulation, there's concerns. My, my initial assessment and analysis, I use Villa Capriani as the, the measuring.
Right.
Device in terms of what, what the high end would look like for an illuminated crosswalk. These other locations, if we have good enough street lighting, I, I think signage and striping would be sufficient. But again, if, if we're asking for grant money based off of one of these programs, an overwhelming majority of the notes in the, in the county website or for the state show illuminated crosswalks in those projects, so.
But that could also be a, a solar panel that puts a light on the sign too, right?
Yes, sir.
Not necessarily, because the one at Villa doesn't light up the crosswalk. It is just a flashing light.
Yes, sir.
The other thing too is, as I understand it, and I did after I got that, I looked at the website about those grants and almost every one of them is kind of reimbursement again. It sounds to me that we have a real need for crosswalks.
Yes, sir.
My hope would be, recommendation, whatever you wanna call it, is that I don't, we can always ask for money and I believe, and I'm not gonna put Tim on the spot here, I believe with the county, all those things are type, are reimbursement. Nobody pays upfront. Okay, so my point is, we have the money in the budget. If, you know, and if you would be willing, you know, through Alice to come back and say, here's the priority ones that we have. Because if we're putting in the sidewalk itself, I mean, the lighting and stuff was a pain in Villa getting it approved, right? It was also about thirty-two thousand dollars. So what would be nice for us to say is, we have the money in the budget, we can always ask to get help from reimbursement or something like that. But my view is, I don't wanna hold up putting crosswalks in because we're waiting. How long do we wait with Villa? Eighteen months to get approval, right?
Well, you're, you're still gonna have that long of a wait because you have, that's permitting with the DOT.
No, I understand. And that was the other point I'm gonna make is, I think you indicated you've reached out to them, but you haven't heard back too, right?
Not, not on the crosswalk, sorry.
Right, right. But my point though is, it'd be nice for us to be able to do this as quickly as we can.
Yes, sir.
Especially based upon your priorities. The second thing I would ask you to do is, I understand that Osprey, the people in Osprey have already reached out to DOT about putting a crosswalk there and that it is being worked on. It's probably not a bad idea for us to reach out to the people at Osprey, okay? DOT could probably give you the same information, but I think it wouldn't hurt us to find out what's going on and what the status is with that. Okay, but again, you know, my, my personal priorities are, we have the money in the budget. I don't like spending if we don't have it.
Yes, sir.
But to wait for reimbursement just seems like a, not a good idea.
Yes, sir.
And I do, I just wanna say to, to go with your, no, I was thinking about how I wanted to say, to go with what you had just said. You clearly have identified the priorities that are in here as critical and, you know, they're the six that you just spoke about as well.
Yes, ma'am.
So I think what you're looking for today would be some direction from the board to go ahead and proceed with going down the path of moving forward with these six and aligning it to our budgetary funds.
Yes, ma'am.
I think belief, I just want everybody to say that's what I think. Go ahead.
So we had money in the budget for like six or seven, and so if we move forward with those, are you ask, I mean, are we asking the board to take direction to approve moving forward and then we'll ask for reimbursement later? I'm just putting that out there.
If I could just clarify what I was asking for real quick. Do you have any lights on? What I was asking for in something like that is you would come back to us with a cost, right?
Yes, sir.
And if it's just striping and it's ten thousand dollars.
Right, right. We have two hundred thousand dollars in the budget.
But I think also you're.
Two hundred and eighty thousand in the budget.
I think what, I don't know this, but from what your presentation was, I'm assuming you're gonna come back to us and say, look, I can do eight of these for two eighty, or I can do four of them for two eighty, okay?
Yes, sir.
Give me some direction. You'll come back to us with, this one costs this, this one costs this, this one costs this. And, and tie it back to the budget and then we'll know. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, but could we go back to the Seagull? Because I had a comment about the, what we were talking about at Seagull.
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm asking. Ricky, can you put the? Yeah, well, I can do it in fifteen seconds. So, yeah, from what I've had conversations with the neighbors, I think it would be a good idea to. to have maybe a four-way stop there at where New River Inlet, the north one, I guess, uh, goes into Seagull, all right? And the reason is, most people that are visitors don't realize that New River doesn't go straight. And the next thing they see is the twenty mile an hour speed limit.
Yes, sir.
You know, it'd be good for the D O T to put a sign up there in that grassy area preceding that intersection, New River Inlet Road, in a right turn signal, but having a four-way stop would really, uh, probably do the job. And the crosswalk should probably go in that area because there is a, uh, kind of a neighborhood, uh, access along the tree line. I, i- if you, Ricky, if you run the arrow down to where those trees are, cross the other way.
To the left.
Be, okay, behind those properties there on New River Inlet Road, there's a fence line and there's been a, a neighborhood crossover there. The storms took out the stairs, but I think the people are still using that crossover. So that's how those neighbors in the Seagull area are getting, uh, access to the beach. And the other, uh, proposed, uh, crossing there at Seagull, where it comes back into New River Inlet Road, I kind of think the people at, at the Topsail Reef would be actually opposed to that one because they've had problems with people crossing the street and going through their buildings to access the beach at low tide. So I think the, if we had to choose, the primary spot would be where New River first enters Seagull.
I, I would agree with that. As somebody who I, at least, all this summer, I tried to walk every day, weather permitting, and that would be part of my walk, was around that square. And the, um, and the one up by Gunny Boatman Drive, the problem is with that one, that's, uh, like Laura was talking about, the straightaway. Once they, once they get to Shipwatch and it's basically a straightaway past the St. Regis and stuff, they're going pretty quick. And there are a lot of people, more than you would think, that are walking that way, um, from both directions that, I would think that a crosswalk would at least maybe slow them down.
Mm-hmm.
As a start. I think that that would be the, the one to do it.
Can I, hey, it's just, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, let's...
Okay, to Connie's point, one, one other thing that, that will help with up there at Seagull and Boatman and New River Inlet is all the traffic to and from the driving beach at, during the summer. Particularly when they're done. When they're done, they're in a hurry to get home and maybe they've been over served up there in the hot sun and they like, they like to just fly up the road there. And if, yeah, I thought I'd be the last guy in the world to ever support the idea of a four-way stop sign, but it's sounding kind of good right now because it will stop traffic and slow it down going around, uh, through Seagull. And again, I had a conversation yesterday with two Seagull residents about speeding up there. Um, I want to thank you for the report. Um, very well done, very detailed. You know, very, very impressive, especially coming from a, from a marine. Um, I can say that.
Thank you, sir.
Um, no, good job on it. I think it really did well. Rick, to your point, I think, I think we're on, on the right path. If we, we decide we need to do these crosswalks, we just go ahead and pay for them because we've got the money in the budget. And if we get reimbursed, we get reimbursed, and that's, that's gravy. But we need, we need to do this. I would think also, though, um, as far as lighting them up, and like the one at the, uh, at the Villa, nobody's pushing that button, okay? Nobody pushes that. You wait for them to push the button, and they don't, and it's like, oh crap, there's somebody coming out.
I've seen, I've seen that, yeah.
Um, but, but by and large, I'd say it's probably sixty, forty at best. And I think the reason, you know, put, putting a, putting a lighted one is, is a great idea in an area that's a blind curve like that one is. But on a straightaway, I, I, I think we're, we're less apt to need to spend that much money to get the desired effect.
I, I'm also, to what Rick said, I am also really eager to see what happens with Osprey because when I saw that on the, on the not as recommended crosswalk location, um, I understood why, but that's still forty-five miles an hour up there. And, um, up there because I live north of it.
Down there.
Down there. Um, I would like to see one there, but if they're working on it, I, I propose that we, uh, we support them in any way that we can.
Just, just real, just real quick.
I'm sorry, I don't realize.
Sorry. So when we talk about the crosswalks that are just painted crosswalks with warning kind of signs, like, I don't know, fifty yards, a hundred yards?
The yellow ones, yeah.
He's gonna talk. So, um, so what is this, you know, if you have the painted crosswalk, the signs are how far from those typically?
I, I would say roughly fifty feet. I don't have the specs memorized. Um, but, but it's generally fifty to a hundred feet leading into that.
Okay.
Crossing point.
And that paint wears off.
Mm-hmm.
And that becomes a maintenance issue for us.
Correct.
Correct. So when, if, when you come back to us from a budgetary standpoint, if we don't have a line item for maintenance of the crosswalks, that could be something you propose or take a look at. In addition, if we look at each one of these when you bring them back as a priority, if you can say the recommendation for lighting, not lighting, also, you know, striping, uh, almost sometimes warning striping I've seen in other beach towns so that before you get right to the crosswalk, there's other striping that lets you know you're gonna hit a crosswalk, you're getting there. So if we could look at design and then give us an estimate per crosswalk based on what your recommendation is, and then take a look at maintenance for next year from a budget standpoint because I'm concerned that, you know, we're going to take on the maintenance of these and we may not have that in our current budget.
Yeah, you will, the town will take on the maintenance of these crosswalks going forward because that's going to be part of the agreement with N C D O T, just like we did with Villa Capriani Crosswalk. Uh, we're accepting the maintenance and responsibility of those going forward. So you're taking, yes, so you're taking on and you're committing to maintenance and maintaining them going forward. That becomes essentially your crosswalk.
Well, the more reason to keep it simple.
And then, just real quick, and I would have to agree with Tom in terms of the number of people that hit that button, but because I know how much that costs, I hit that button every time, but it's definitely hit or miss in terms of that. The second thing is, and maybe this is a dumb question, you were talking about stops and stuff. Is, is Seagull still a county road? I don't know that that's a county road. It's not.
It's a town-owned road.
We can do stuff on that ourselves, right? If it's not a county, because I, our state road, because I think when you turn, you know, the, the state road goes, is the S.
Yes, sir.
Seagull is ours. So to the extent that we want to put stop signs on our road, I don't know that we have to, do we have to go to D O T? I don't know.
We just look into that.
We can take that as a follow-up, but I'd really like to try and stay on track. And I believe what we need to do is provide staff direction to move forward with putting together the thoughts for these high, these six high priority crosswalks to start working through our budget process and working with Alice on that to bring it back to the board.
Are you looking for a motion?
A consensus.
I just think consensus.
Do we have, is everybody on board with that consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
With, with one addition that Connie talked about, to try to reach out, because Osprey's already started, not just focus on them, because there's already something underway with Osprey, I think it'd be a good idea to reach out to them. Is that okay as a consensus?
Yep.
Any questions from you guys? No, thank you very much. That was a nice job.
Thank you very much.
Bravo. Well done.
Okay, we are gonna move on to new business and we're gonna...
Destruction.
Oh, I forgot, Laura, I'm sorry. E, destruction of public records, I'm sorry, Larry.
No time.
So, Lexi, I just, I appreciate that you've started this work now that we have a town clerk and everything. Um, a couple of clarifications and a couple of asks for you on this one.
Um.
As I was reading through.
Mike.
Oh, sorry.
Now I got it. Um, I wanted to start looking at maybe adding, did this include electronic records destruction?
Um, no, so I'm currently working on a, um, electronic records retention policy based off the state archives.
Okay.
Um, it is not ready yet to come to the board, uh, because you can make modifications, but if you do, those have to go to the state archives first, uh, for them to approve before I would bring it to you. Um, so the records that were destroyed were records that were already, um, past their expiration date, did not have any historical value, um, for the town and were expired based off the record retention policy that the board had adopted a couple of years ago.
So in this type of memo going forward, if you could refer to the state statute or the town ordinance or whatever?
Absolutely.
In, in the document so that it's just a little more detailed?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then in regards to the town retention policy for documents, um, in general, is that seven years, nine years? Do we, do we know what that is?
Um, so your record retention policy, are you, when you're asking how many years it is, are you asking how long the record reten- record retention policy is good for or how long?
So the records themselves?
So it depends on what kind, kind of record it is.
Thank you.
Um, so say like a contract, for instance, will have a different retention rate than say like an easement would. Um, so if I'm remembering correctly, for things like easements, um, you have to keep those for, um, ten years past their expiration. So we currently have easements that are thirty years, um, in length. So thirty years from now, I'll have to keep them for an additional ten years, um, before I can, um, get rid of them uh, based on the record retention policy that the board adopted, created by the state. However, um, if it holds some kind of historical value, um, then that is something I, I tend to keep. Um, so things like court cases that we've been do, we've been through over the last, um, you know, thirty-five years we've been here, um, court cases that were historically, um, relevant or important or, um, I guess what Chip would call would be like case law for us. Um, those, those were kept. Smaller things like, um, dispute over taxes or something, those are not necessarily, um, historically relevant or, um, necessary to keep. So things like that were destroyed. Otherwise, um, most of our court records were kept. But, um, other things like employment, for instance, you are required to keep employment records for thirty years. Uh, however, if you are a police officer, it is required that we keep their certifications. So I can toss everything after thirty years, but their certifications. Um, so any records for employment from prior to whatever date the, uh, records, destruction of records, um, certification letter I wrote, uh, from that date, from nineteen ninety to ninety-five, uh, employment records from that time were destroyed except for the ones I noted, like police officers, where we have to keep their certifications, things like that. Um, but otherwise, you know, it, each record has its, its own thing and, uh, it really depends on where it falls within the record retention policy because that policy itself is very, 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 very big.
Okay. So as we go forward in this, if the state makes changes to the state statute, if the board needs to know so that we can update our ordinance around it, or if they make changes to the electronic records statute, if you could let us know that so that when we look at our own electronic records, um, policies, we can stay in line with what the state's doing.
It is my understanding, as of right now, we do not have an electronic records retention policy. Um, the state does update their records retention policy itself, the state archives. Um, and that is what I am working on as one of my pieces now that I would like to bring forward to the board. Um, but I have to first get state approval before I can do anything like that. So that takes a little bit of time because they'll have to look through all of those pages as well for things that I have maybe added or, um, because we can add our own, it just has to be approved.
Okay. Well, we look forward to getting that from you.
Yes.
And we appreciate the work you've done so far on this.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one comment. After, after that, I looked up and basically what you have is a template for the state.
Um, yes.
With, with minimum and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And so basically what you use is the template and then we can modify that if they allow us to do it, right?
Right, so the state sets a template for the entire state. Um, a lot of places end up just, uh, adopting that template. I believe that's what the board did a few years ago, was just adopting the template itself. Um, but there are, again, um, as Alderman Grant said, you can add your own and then you have to submit that to the state, and then they'll either approve or deny.
So for the electronic records retention, um, in regards to data security and all, if we can address both data in the cloud and data that we hold.
Oh, absolutely.
And just let us know how that works.
Yeah, I think we're getting ahead of it. I think we need to get the draft and then we can go from there. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to new business, and now Larry can stand up and get ready to introduce Mr. Gibson.
I'm glad I didn't wear my yellow shirt today. The, uh, I'm Larry Strother and I'm the chairman of the Beach Inlet Sound Advisory Committee for North Topsyll Beach, and I first want to thank the board for allowing us to make this presentation today. Uh, we've not had a, a BISAC meeting for the last couple of months because things were kind of staying status quo, and there wasn't any sense in me hauling people in here just to jabber and, and move on. In a conversation with Chris a, a couple of weeks ago, uh, or a week or so ago, uh, I, I do believe that we are to a point that we're not gonna see things happen really quickly as far as final permitting, but we're getting a lot of inquiry from the public and, and everybody asking, where are we? So what, what I have asked Chris to do, and he, he's going to, and he's got a slide presentation, which is good because people can then pull that up, and it's, and it's got the timeframes and all in there that we expect to do these things. So they're being left with something that they can look at, even though we're not gonna see a lot of action over the next couple of months. Make sense? So in, in any event, I, I, I do, I do appreciate everything that, that y'all have allowed us to do, and we do feel like that we're on tap, on schedule, and that things are gonna still work out the way that it was planned to time-wise. We've just got a little delays here and there, which we're built in, and Chris will talk some about that. But thank y'all so much, and, and listen, I know, I know Lexi, y'all have probably told Lexi that I do so much work that I can't just be one person. So, but e- either that or y'all think I talk too much, but anyway, there's not an S on the end of my name. They, they think I must be plural. I must be more than one person. So I'm gonna now introduce Chris.
I apologize.
And, and I'm not, and, and he's going to make a presentation to you. Thank you.
Just so I can see it. Um, I'm Chris Gibson. Uh, I am a coastal engineer out of Wilmington, uh, with T I Coastal. We've been working for several years now with the town on various, various projects, but the specific one I'm here to talk about today, um, is regarding the beach nourishment that would be in phases one, two, and three, uh, and where that material's coming from and what we can expect over the next, uh, twelve to twenty-four months as far as that project goes. Um, ne- next slide, please. So again, the purpose of this project, we, we've got two main purposes for this project, and that has to do with the funding mechanisms, uh, that go into it. So this is not only a beach re-nourishment project, but it is a rehabilitation of roughly a sixty-acre disposal site for the Corps of Engineers. Historically, a lo- along Cedar Bush Cut, the intercoastal waterway up, uh, channel to Jack's, uh, material was dredged and placed in this island, and this was all beach quality material. So it got taken out of the littoral zone, put in the island, and about forty years ago, this island reached an elevation that it could no longer be used, uh, for beach re-nourishment because it was too far up to pump, and the pipelines would get clogged. So what we're looking at doing is cutting that island back down, taking that sand that's been taken out of the littoral process and putting it back onto the beach. Now, the nice thing is the way, uh, different funds are set up in North Carolina. Um, the shallow draft inlet fund also has stipulations for providing dredge disposal areas or rehabilitating dredge disposal areas or constructing them. So in this case, what we're looking at doing is using a three-to-one cost share from the state to rehabilitate that disposal area for future Corps of Engineers and local, um, marina, uh, local user needs in, in use and taking that sand and putting it... uh, local user needs in in use and taking that sand and putting it on the beach. And so we we get, we kill two birds with one stone. Uh, and also make ourselves eligible for a higher, um, commitment from the state. Typically, beach funds, straight-up beach funds, if you're gonna go offshore and get sand and bring it in, is a one-to-one match. Whereas if we've got a navigation piece to it, it can be a three-to-one match. So we certainly want to go that direction where we can, especially when we're talking about the type of money we're talking about. Um, next slide, please. So the beach fill, let's talk about this. Um, this area we're we're looking at is, I'm gonna get my numbers. It is roughly, um, five and a half miles long. Uh, goes from where we finished up four, just out south of the bridge, comes all the way up to the north end. Um, we would be creating, uh, not only a beach feature, like we've done in four and five over the last couple of years, but we'll actually be adding a new dune feature, either reconstructing the existing dune, if there is some left, or in some cases, building new dune. Um, we are, uh, because of the Division of Coastal Management rules, up around area one, we can reconstruct the dune that was built in twenty thirteen, but we can't do anything larger than that. There's policies against new dunes in order to, the buildings are already up there, but they try to, um, not promote growth in high high erosion areas, like the north end, which is nearly twenty, twenty feet per year if it was unprotected, uh, by the sandbags. Um, again, uh, the things that we're looking at doing up there, uh, we would be looking at the sixty, seventy-five foot wide beach berm in front of that as well, on a natural slope. So that'll give enough beach to protect that dune. Uh, one of the things that we often see in projects, uh, that are done based on the general federal, uh, design parameters, is that you have a nice dune, but you have a narrow beach and there's not enough beach there to protect the dune. So as soon as you get a storm, it's up, there's still energy in that water when it comes over the beach and hits the dunes and it starts scarping. And once you start scarping, gravity works with the erosion rather than against it. If the water has to roll over sand, it has to lift it in order to pull it out. If it's hitting into a a wall of sand, gravity falls it, you know, causes it to fall off and it gets into a slurry already. So it's less energy to hit a scarp and erode a scarp than it is to erode a slope. So we try to put gentle sloping, um, uh, features, both on the dune frontage uh, and on the beach frontage as well. Uh, typically a one-on-twenty-five slope, which is, uh, lower slope than what you see with, um, other projects. Um, next slide, please. Uh, real quick, these were, um, looking at some of the the stuff that was up there at the no- at the north end in twenty thirteen, uh, what the kind of shape of it was. Uh, it was, uh, that's on the right. What you see now is, uh, what we plan to do through that most of the project. Um, it was a little bit higher beach, which is easier to scarp. On Topsail Island, if you put sand in above elevation five on the beachfront, it will scarp immediately, within days. If it's at five and a half, you will see a six-inch scarp. If it's at four and a half, you won't see a scarp. If it's six foot, you'll see a foot foot-high scarp. It is automatic on this island. I've been doing this here for, uh, north of twenty years and that is something we have dialed in very, very, very well for this island. Uh, so what we want to do is match that natural, uh, situation. Uh, again, so next slide here, please. Uh, and I'm sorry if I'm doing a review of the project and you all know this, then I'm sorry for double dipping, but I just want to kind of bring this up to the forefront. So our source of sand, uh, and this was originally looked at briefly in the EIS that was done for the whole beach. So we're not reinventing the wheel. Uh, but what we did was we went in and we did, uh, I believe it was fifteen cores, uh, on that island. It's a total area is about seventy acres, but we're looking at using a little less than sixty. We took a three-inch diameter tube and shoved that three-inch diameter tube all the way down fifty-five feet into the ground. We pulled it up, it was completely full of sand. Um, as you can see, these are, uh, in the middle picture, that's where we split those and you can see what the sand looks like in that split. So we know how far down we can go till we get to marsh muck or, uh, if we went down and we had refusal, we're hitting bedrock, all of those things. So we know visually in fifteen different places exactly what that looks like in that material, it can extrapolate it. Um, took us about two weeks, this was done, uh, last, not this past spring, but the spring before. Um, and what we found out, uh, next slide, please, um, was that this material was very similar to, that we had two and a half, we had two to two and a half million yards of material, very similar to what was on the beach. Um, this is enough to put basically a hundred yards per linear foot from the bridge all the way north to the very north end of the island. That's nearly double in size of what's been done in the recent projects in phase four and fa- phase five. Uh, and we, because of the the where the island is, the, uh, location as well as being where we weren't gonna have a lot of boat traffic, et cetera, uh, this is a relatively easy, um, it's a relatively easy source to get to. There are some complications in in as far as trying to make sure that we don't dig too deep because there is muck down below, uh, nice technical term there. Um, and we don't want, we don't want a mucky beach. Um, so we we will have some things that we have to work with the contractor on to make sure that it is harvested in a proper way. Uh, we think we've got like three different options already laid out that any one of the dredgers, depending on the class of their dredge, could use one of those options and realistically do the project at a realistic price. You know, you can do anything if you've got five hundred dollars cubic yard, but that's not what we want to do here. Um, uh, going on to the next slide. Um, and I just lost my, come on back. Which one am I on? Yeah, let me go there. There we go. Um, so again, we had anywhere between ten and forty-five feet stacked, uh, of material on the site. Um, there are some intermittent layers of shelly material and and that's just because the site was built in layers. First, they they come in and pump one project. The next year, they'd come and pump a hundred thousand yards into it. And then the next year, they'd pump another fifty thousand yards or whatever. So sometimes you get little layers of of stuff. So we do have a technique, um, where we run this stuff through a basket on the beachside and it goes into a conveyor and gets spit into the back of a truck and we can haul it all off. Anything that's bad, y'all have had cleanup here before. There has been a new technique developed, uh, since the rocks were pumped on the beach in twenty thirteen. New techniques have been developed that make that really easy to take care of. Uh, and it's not horribly expensive. It's about a dollar and a half to two dollars cubic yard uh, to run that through there and ensure that you have the highest quality stuff. Uh, you also have access to, uh, disposal areas, uh, right near the bridge uh, that are accessible by land, which is a great place to put it, so you don't have to truck it thirty miles to get it off the beach and out of the way. Um, so all of those things are kind of falling into play. Um, next slide, please. Oh, pipeline route, I skipped one. Uh, so one of the neat things about this project is how do, how do you get the sand from the island over to the island? Um, you know, in that case, it's, uh, I swear, I'm sorry, my hands, um, neuropathy's a, I'll just leave it neuropathy's neuropathy. Yes, can you do that for me, Larry? I can't do it.
Where are we at?
Uh, I was just, I was skipping one page. I was going one page. I couldn't get this two split apart. Right there. I'm sorry for this, folks.
That's why everybody needs an assistant.
There we go, there we go. Okay, so, um, one of the things, um, that we we looked at is how do we, how do we get this, uh, material pipe from one end of the beach to the other? What's the most economical way to do it? Uh, so what we looked at, um, if you come into the island on the Cedar Bush Cut end, it's ni- it's nice, it's squared off, it's clean sand, there's no marsh, there's not a whole lot of, there's no, very little environmental impact to go to dredging directly into that site. What we would do is dredge into that site and dredge down to about minus fourteen, minus sixteen. Got good clean sand on that end down that far. Then we close up the dike behind the dredge, this is the tricky part. Close the dike up behind the dredge, raise the water level so that the dredge could actually dredge as shallow as one or two feet. So we'd float the dredge up. They would be able to actively work the whole site and get above the muck layers and we can control that water level up and down so that they can, because they need about twelve to fourteen feet to dredge. So we can control that, that we have that water level, uh, inside the site. We've done this before. This isn't a new thing. We did this before at Topsail Beach for DA one eighty-nine. So we're not doing anything new. We'd run the pipeline down the waterway, uh, just past Marina Way uh, and come across the island there. There's a bridge there. I know there's some homes that are going in, but I think there's not completely. Yeah, but our, but our plan right now would be to go under that bridge so we wouldn't have to do any kind of, uh, directional bore or any kind of, um, uh, cut work on the road. That seems like a good area to go where we can just slip the pipe underneath the road.
And then so you're also coming across the golf course there, so I'm assuming from a town perspective, we would need easements or something from those?
Yeah, so we would need, we would need easements from them. Of course, this is drawn out so you can see it, but obviously the pipeline would run on the fringe area of it. We wouldn't want to run it right to fairway. Um, it's easy to see in the fairway, but it would be pushed along the edge of it. Yes, we would need to go ahead and go through, uh, getting easements for that. Or if we have to extend, again, we could run it through the areas that is forested back there, but again, trying to do as mi- minimal footprint as possible.
This is all above ground, too.
It's all above ground. Uh, so this pipe would be laid, it would typically be, uh, twenty-four inch, well, no, at this point, it would probably be twenty-four inch steel. Um, this would have enough pressure on it, they'd want to do steel instead of plastic. Um, and then it would come over, come under, we would pump to the south first and go down and tie into phase four. Then flip the pipeline and go to the north and go all the way up to the north end of, end of the island.
So, sir, though, is there a plan B if those owners won't give easements?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, there's obviously other places we've looked to cross. This is the easiest, simplest.
Okay.
There's, uh, there's, uh, there's been talk, uh, of ways of possibly coming through, uh, down at Marina, uh, we originally looked at going through where the, uh, power line comes up.
Yeah.
And going down there, uh, at the time we started looking at that, there were no houses on that road. There's been some houses added. That became a little more complicated. Um, we could always go straight down the beach, but what that means if we did that would be a booster on the beach. And for noise, for for noise reasons, we'd prefer not to put that ma- main booster on the beach. We'd like to have it, uh, on a barge in the waterway. Um, just as a convenience, both to the dredgers and to the community during the project. But there's, we've got three ways to skin this cat.
Okay.
Um, we always started everything with a plan A, B, C, and D, and hopefully we can get through with plan A. That's usually our most economical. And then, you know, go from there to see what's, what's, what's palatable. But yes, there are, there are options. Um, flipping to the next one, a- again, talking about project magnitude. Um, the project, again, consists of two, two to two-point-six million cubic yards. We identified, uh, two-point-six million cubic yards in the site. Uh, just depending on what method is har- of harvesting is used, will determine how much we can get to, how much of it is surgically removed and how much of it, um, is, you know, bull, bull with a baseball bat. Um, again, five and a half miles of beach re-nourishment and dune restoration. Um, as we get up to the north end, we had talked about trying to put in a retention structure up there to hold this sand in place while the terminal groin was being permitted. Uh, when you bring stuff before the state, you get the no, the heck no, the are you blanking kidding me and the don't come back. Those are your four options. We got the don't come back. Um, so, uh, we've taken and tabled that. Uh, we did have a plan B on that and the, and the plan B, um, is to beef up, uh, some of the the placement uh, up at the north end, not at the very north end. One of the things that happens, uh, with all these Corps of Engineers disposals is they start and they pump and they started, they start north of the houses and they come and and they try to work around that corner. And usually they've spent half the material before they get to the first house, because it washes back behind them. And so you lose all of that material up onto the spit, which eventually falls back into the intercoastal waterway, yada, yada, yada. Um, the twenty-eleven, the first project in phase one. Uh, twen- was it twenty-eleven? Is that that number right? Have to forgive me. Um, the material was dredged out of the inlet and placed on that very north shoulder and you dug a hole on the beach. We've all dug holes on the beach. Tides come in and the pile of sand you put beside the hole fell, fell back in the hole. Well, in that particular project, the hole was, it's big, the amount of sand that was beside it was small because it was stretched down two and a half miles down the beach. So we had over erosion for that trying to equilibrate itself. So the idea is we know that this is gonna draw sand from somewhere just south of the reefs, north. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna, we're gonna do a dune and some protective, and a protective feature at the very north end. But we're gonna beef up the beach at the reefs, seeing that as a feeder as it's being pulled north to buy more time, to make it have to travel through the, um, through the the developed area rather than immediately, you know, first grain left is leaving the whole area of concern. We want to, we want to kind of feed that with the situation we have. And hopefully, by the time that we get further into this, um, you know, we'll be seeing some movement on the terminal groin. I'm not directly involved with that. I hear information from you guys, so I'm third-hand. I I I can't make a statement on where y'all are with that, so I'm, I'm sorry, I can't provide more information. Um, flipping to the next one. Um, cost, that's one of the things, everybody, how much is this thing gonna do? So, uh, we're currently under a roughly six-hundred-and-fifty-k contract to get this thing permitted and designed and to the point of putting it out to contract. Um, we are, we have been working, we we have a basically a ninety percent design right now. Um, we are working through the permitting process and as we all know, permitting processes can be a slow go. Um, when we look to construction, how much is this gonna take to build? Um, it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of about eight to ten million dollars M O B and somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen dollars a yard to pump the sand to the beach. That's kind of the going market rate right now. Um, this one's a little better than some things because there's certain weathers, boat traffic, certain environmental constraints, because it's inside a disposal island rather than open water offshore, that make this a little easier. Um, but that's roughly what we're gonna be looking at. Um, you know, we're doing, looking at probably doing a do- five and a half miles of dune planning. Uh, that could easily, as we saw from, uh, what we did, uh, post Florence, could be somewhere in the two-million-dollar range. Um, and then construction management on this, uh, probably ten months of work, so somewhere around a million dollars, doing all the surveys to make sure everything's happening correctly and in compliance on both ends of the pipeline. Um, with that, with the shallow draft inlet fund, uh, going at three-to-one, that would be thirty-three to thirty-five million dollars from the state and a town cost of eleven to twelve million dollars. Uh, which I understand right now is within what the town has within the coffers, that we're in a good financial place to make this move forward. All right, so where are we? All those things, we're sitting on go. Uh, and I hate, I always hate it when I'm sitting on go, but there's somebody else slowing us down, not, and it's, and it's not us. Um, during this process, one of the first things that we did was go through and pull title on all the pieces of property that we wanted to to look at, know who we gotta get easements from. Uh, state of North Carolina, uh, the title to the island is under the state of North Carolina. Uh, the, the land section, uh, we've done this many, many times with them and typically their point of view is if you got a camera permit and the corps is okay with it, it's in the easement, have at it. Um, it turns out that North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission is making a claim that they potentially need to write the easement rather than the land section. Um, we began communication with them immediately after the one-stop meeting we had in May and that has been held up. We have not had, uh, we have not had good, uh, response. And I mean, not that we've had negative response, it's just been a lack of response from the North, North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission. Um, we have had folks with DEQ that have said to please start copying them on correspondence with Wildlife Resources Commission because they believe this is a good project and will help us try to push things through. We have also started communicating with the Corps of Engineers, uh, have a meeting set up with them um, because they don't, they have an existing easement on this land and possibly working through them may be a way to get around it. So again, your plans A, B, C. We are currently working on all A, B, and C plans and shotgunning that, uh, trying to move this process along. We still have several months that we can sit on go with these folks before it becomes, before we reach critical mass. We had a lot of extra time built in. So, um, we're working to gain that that easement, um, and- Um, and we've also gone through directly to the Division of Lands, who is on the title, uh, asked for, uh, uh, for the easement from them, um, and we have not heard anything, heard anything back from them yet. Again, on Monday, we got information about setting up a meeting with the Corps of Engineers to, to work that route. Uh, flip to the next one. Uh, next steps that we need to go through. I think we're at a time period and a place in this project that we have an idea of what it will cost, that we should go ahead and put in for the shallow, shallow draft grant, um, shallow draft grant fund. Um, I also think that, given the magnitude of this, that the, uh, the town should work with our lobbyist, this with the TISPC, David, what's his name?
Farrell.
David Farrell, and look to see if we can get some legislated funds, much like Oak Island did a couple of years ago. Um, there is plenty of money in the shallow draft inlet fund, but this would be a big chunk of it. So, there may be a, a pushback, but if we could get legislated funds, that would obviously be the best thing to do. Of course, we know where the, the state is with the budget. We're still waiting for a budget for, uh, twenty-six through twenty-eight. Um, so that may be hard to get in right now. It may have to go on the next budget cycle. Uh, we're currently moving to get the easements for DA one thirty-one, DA one forty-three and obtain pipeline crossing easements. Um, at the time we have the easements, then we can submit a complete permit application and would take, uh, anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred-and-eighty days for that to work through the process. And then if there's any tweaks to the design that we have to do, because through that process, we'd do it at that time. Um, we're looking to, to do the bid documents, uh, and put the thing out to bid in March of twenty-six, which gives us a lot of leeway on time. Um, that would lead toward getting a contract in place and looking at clearing the vegetation out of the way on the island in August through October. Uh, hope that the contractor would go ahead and start laying pipeline in October, because most of the work, except for on the beach, can be completed outside the environmental window. And then plenty of time for dredge and fill in November twenty-six through April of twenty-seven. All of that is still on schedule, even that with the delays we had. We, when we came to you, we built enough cushion in that, we've used some of our cushion, but we have not gotten to a point that we're in trouble. Um, I believe that was my last slide.
So, thank you, first of all, for presenting all of that information, Chris. It was very helpful. I'm, I'm just going to speak for myself. I still, we've talked about this a lot over the years when it comes to the very north end and the erosion that we had after the project that had failed and those homes up there. So, I will say, I personally am still very concerned about not having a structure in place before we start to nourish up there. And I understand this is a different project. So, you potentially could make me feel much better about it, but I really don't want to cause any additional erosion issues for what seems to have stabilized over the years. I mean, it's still not where we want it to be, but...
Very, very good, very good point, Mayor, and, and it's something that everyone should be concerned about. Uh, anytime you get this close to a dynamic situation like these inlets, um, you've got a lot that you're dealing with. One of the things that happened in the last project, and this happened specifically at Ocean Isle as well, uh, when the Corps brought in the nineteen-ninety-six beach re-nourishment project. They did shallow inlets kind of similarly. They dug a hole right there by the tip of the island, and then they pumped the material predominantly down past the initial houses.
Mm-huh.
Right? Same thing happened here. You had a little bit of sand that was put at the very tip, but then a lot of it went south of the reefs. And that material that went south of the reefs did a pretty good job staying there, right? But that hole was so big, it took everything that was from the reefs north and additional sands that went with it. One of the big differences in this versus that is there's no manipulation of the inlet channel itself. As you said, it's kind of stabilized. It is, it is in a stabilized, bad word, not static. It is in a, in a, a moving dynamic that is understandable right now. Um, so in this case, instead of digging a hole there and putting sand there, um, you're just putting sand there.
Okay.
So, there's not a hole for it to fall into. So, that's a big difference in where we were fifteen years ago.
So, Chris, I really appreciate the work that you did with the, the BICEC committee in developing this plan. I think it's a, a great plan. It kind of completes our whole shoreline, uh, nourishment, uh, for next few years and what we need to do. Uh, and I like the idea, I'll emphasize what Joanne was asking, but the point that you were going to put extra sand down by the Saint Regis and the drown, downdrift current will take that sand gradually back to the north. So, it will gradually repla- replace that sand on the north end behind the, the houses where the sandbag is. And you could continue in future years to put sand in that one area and then let it go back to, to the north end.
One of the things that we, we've talked about in the past, and I think we really need to do in the future, um, especially if the Corps of Engineers continues to put sand onto the beach, uh, the north end when they, when they dredge the, the crossroads. That, um, that material, when it's placed and when they, because the contractor, the lease cost part of it, as an, as an operations and maintenance, all they care about is getting the sand out of the channel. They have no care where the sand goes on the beach. If we could put it in place where it costs them no more money to start the sand placement down by the reefs, whether it's, and, and my suggestion has always been that we need to put in, like we have at Topsail, a pipeline under the road so they can hook up in the back without having to string it around the beach where they have no beach and start pumping there. And as they pump, that sand that's bleeding off, that fills in back behind in front of the beach club. And you move south and you constantly get this pull back to the north, and that sand has to migrate through useful areas rather than getting all the way down on the tip where it's no longer useful. That's, again, if we had our druthers, the terminal groin would be in place before we did this, and we would be backfilling the terminal groin. That is, that would be Plan A. The realism of, do we hold up the other five miles of beach? Because we don't have the terminal groin for the half mile of beach, doesn't, it doesn't make sense. In my mind, it may, it may as a board thing, but that does, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense. And it doesn't make sense financially to hold off that little bit of sand from that north end to put it up there later because of the mobilization.
So, I want to come back to, uh, that point you made about applying for the shallow draft fund grant.
Mm-huh.
Uh, I think it's, we need to do that as soon as we can, and here's the reason. The shallow draft fund only has sixty-six million dollars in it only. You're proposing that we're going to ask for half of that sixty-six million. The legislature and its effort to recover from Hurricane Helene has taken the money that should go into the shallow draft fund from the marine tax. That's, that's a dedicated source of funding for the, they've taken that away from the shallow draft fund. They're putting it recovering in western North Carolina. So, we need to apply for that grant as soon as we can, because we're going to be asking for half of the balance. And they're probably not going to get, uh, additional funds in the shallow draft fund next year. It's going to do a two-year budget, so, I mean, it could be a situation that the state may not have enough money if other communities in, along the coast are applying for the state money. So, again, I think it's, and, and one final thing. I know the Wildlife Resources got involved, and my comment to them would be that you, that DA one forty-three is a disturbed landscape, and it has invasive species, pine trees, shrubs, upland birds in that area that used to be a salt marsh. So, in reality, you are restoring that, in that, uh, artificial area back to its natural condition.
I, I would, I would totally agree with your statement on DA one forty-three and add to that that by, right now, the Corps has been, there's three other islands there, and they've been doing very limited dike raisings and, and, and doing stuff from Channel to Jacksonville and those other islands. Um, they are not of a magnitude that makes a lot of sense. By switching everything over to DA one forty-three in one big chunk, they could take all three of those islands and make up the acreages twofold, um, for lost habitat by turning those into habitat, um, restoration areas. So...
Tom, do you have something to say? A couple of comments?
Yeah, real, just a couple. First of all, we talk about the sand that comes out of the inlet and up through the crossroads. And my only concern with that sand is the granularity, because I've seen it from when we've, when the Corps pumped sand out during a, a navigation project against a beach project when the sand came out of the middle of the inlet. And it's, there's a real difference between the weight of the sand that comes out in a navigation project and the weight of the sand that comes out of the actual inlet. I know we're not going to the inlet, but I'm just more using that as a comparison relative to that sand. Is it beach, is it beach compatible?
So, the material, once you get, so once you get up into Channel to Jacks, right there at the crossroads, the current is still fast enough to, to be decent quality material. But once you go past the crossroads and go Channel to Jacks, which is, you start going up.
Right.
And they do dredge that. You're, some of that material is absolutely not beach quality, and that's why they've been putting it in these other three islands. Um, but even as you get up into the waterway, you're looking at grain sizes that are like point-one-eight millimeters, where your base on this beach is about point-two-six, point-two-seven. And that difference is, it is incredible.
Yeah.
Uh, the different, the difference in, in the, and what that weight and angularity and all that means. It's still all quartz, which is good. Uh, we're not dealing with a high shell content, which that likes to flutter in the sand and flutter in the, in the current and move even more. Um, but yeah, if we can, and that was one of the things that was nice about the disposal area, is when they pump into it, the material kind of, if you look at the picture of the island, you see the white, the big white hump on one end, and it's lower and darker material on the other. What ends up happening is those fine materials, when they pump in there, the fine materials run down toward the pipe where the water discharges, and the sand stays up on one end. So, it's already kind of been washed.
Okay.
So, this is a very high qual- what we're trying to harvest is a very high-quality sand. Again, when we've done the truck haul, one of the things that I've been a proponent, well, nobody likes to have trucks on the road, including myself. The proponent of that is that that material over there is much heavier than your native. That's, that's point-three-five to point-four. And so that material lasts a lot longer on the beach. The extra, the extra money you pay for the haul has been worthwhile compared to if you tried to get something finer-grained over on this side of the county.
So, to go back to the example, when the beach project was done, and then the Corps came in and put sand in front of it that was due to the navigation project. On a windy day, you would actually see the sand the Corps put down blowing away. And the stuff that came out of this, middle of the inlet, the heavy-grained sand stayed put.
Yeah.
One more question. The spoil island.
Yes, sir.
How, and this goes back to the mayor's original point. I was showing her just a minute ago on my tablet, the, the Google map of the, you know, the actual area where it is. I mean, how far down, I know, I know how tall that thing is. I can see it out the windows of my house. I mean, what, what amount of elevation, if we do this thing, would be, you know, how many feet?
How many feet? Great.
You know, I mean, I know how tall it is now. How tall is it going to be when it's done? Because I think the, the question and the, and the concern is, is that the contour, as it, as it moves through the waterway and the crossroads up there, um, if we don't disturb the actual contour, it won't change the dynamic of the inlet at all, right?
No, it shouldn't. So, what, what you're going to see when, when this is all done, uh, right now, the isle, the island is about forty, forty feet tall.
Mm-huh.
Um, we're going to take that down to between minus five and minus fifteen. It's going to be a lake.
Okay.
Okay. But there's going to be a levee on the perimeter of the whole thing that's about twelve feet high. So, it will be separated. This will, this will be a duck impoundment, for, for lack of a better term. Um, it will still, it will be separate from the cedar bush cut, from the waterway. It will not be a connecting water. Um, and it will have the levee around it, so it's ready for, uh, initial use immediately after construction.
So, and then, again, to summarize, the issues that, that occurred with the twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve project were because of the disruption to the inlet.
Yeah. The, the, the big...
And this disrupt, there will be no disruption similar to that in any way, shape, or form.
No, no, and no, no way, shape, or form. And you even saw, so, post-two thousand and eleven, maybe it was two thousand and sixteen, there was a project that was done and Cutro was the contractor. They dug some sand about halfway back Cedar Bush Cut. I don't know if you remember that one. Uh, CPNE was the engineer on it. Um, it went through the shallow draft. They dug the, the authorized channel between where you come in the inlet and then you cut across over to the north side of Cedar Bush. They dug that channel.
Right.
Um, they actually dug it twice, because they dug, they dug through it, and when they got to the other end, it just showed in so fast, it couldn't float out. Um, but that one had very little impact, because it didn't change the dynamic of the inlet. All of that's happening, you know, um, I forget, but it's basically, all of that dynamic is happening from when you make the cut south and then start heading out. There's where the dynamic thing.
I know exactly.
If you're doing something on that point where that inlet foul weg, which is the nice big coastal engineering word for the deep channel, um, if you're doing something in that, throw to that channel right there off the tip of the island, you've got to be expecting a major response to the land formations on either side. But being all the way back in the back and not changing any of the, any of the channel dynamics back there at all. Uh, we should not have anything, if anything, we should see the inlet be pushed slightly north as the sand does backflow into it.
Okay. All right, so, so, one is, um, we talked about up in phase one, okay? My response to this, I think that you will be prudent in terms of not just throwing money away, but two things to point out. One is, we're looking for three-to-one financing on this thing, all right? And I don't know anything that I've seen is going to get cheap, all right? So, if we delay this thing again, and now instead of being forty-four to forty-seven million, we leave part of it out there and that piece becomes ten or fifteen by itself, doesn't sound like a great solution. Second thing, I believe you said, is this does not preclude us from pursuing the groin, and that we're going to continue to pursue the groin, all right, and, and go after those. And then the third thing is, I agree with going after the money in the shallow draft fund, but I will point to our friend over here who told me about a year and a half ago that I brought back here is, we got to get legislation with our name on it.
Yes, I agree with that.
Because just going after the shallow draft fund, uh, to Mike's point, if we're going, if we're not going to get half of it, we better figure out how much we can get. And I think you gave me an example of somebody that did that for, was it Ocean Isle? That had put money out. It was in their name, and even though they didn't spend it, it had been allocated to them. And I think that is something, I see you nodding, and I know you guys had, no, but Tim had committed that they would work with us in the legislature to do that. So, I think that that's something that we ought to be pursuing just as hard as anything else.
I, I, I agree with that. Oak Island was the town. They got twenty million dollars. It was allocated about four years ago, five years ago. They're finally going to spend it this winter. Um, they went through a couple of, uh, bid processes where it was just not enough, um, not enough contractors for the amount of work they wanted to do and the time they wanted to do it in.
And then just, just one other comment that you're already aware of. People need to understand, this is called a reimbursement project, okay? The thirty-whatever million dollars we're asking from the state through shallow draft or whatever means we have to front the money and then get the money back. And if you look at the financial that we just looked at, we're still waiting for FEMA money coming back. So, it's important. We talked about starting a, a five-year planning process, which you hope, hopefully get done before you're at that point. But we need to figure out where that money is. We did SOBs before. We did all that kind of stuff. So, it's not just having enough cash to do our piece of it. It's having enough cash and, and financing available to get that other money. And hopefully, it'll, that'll come back. But I think, and Alice, it's in the report, we're still waiting, we're still at what, six or seven million dollars by FEMA today? If, if we're looking at fifteen or twenty million dollars that we don't get back from them for a period of time, we have to have that in place, which means we've got to manage it. It is. It is.
Yes.
It is.
Shallow...
No, I, I checked that before I made the comment. That's, that's a reimbursement project.
It is a reimbursement. Uh, shallow draft moves at a little bit faster pace than, a significantly faster pace than FEMA does. My experience, uh, um, you know, I've worked with both Surf City and Topsail Beach using shallow draft funds and using large, you know, fifteen, eighteen million dollars of shallow draft funds. We haven't had any real... We haven't had any real issue, but recommendation, if you're looking at, because the speed these projects move at, you need to have about thirty-five to forty percent of the project cost in hand to be able to cash flow it. Project this size, especially on mobilization and the final bill on demobilization, where they fall in the month, could easily be a twenty, twenty million dollar bill in one month. And then you're going to take thirty to forty-five days to get it back.
So we're talking twenty to thirty million dollars we have to have in hand.
I, I would highly recommend that we, Topsail-
That was my point.
Topsail usually, usually spends six to eight, and we recommend for them to keep twelve million on hand. And the nice part, nice part about that is, when you get done with it and you cash flow it, if you immediately get hit by a storm right afterwards, and there is FEMA money that comes right afterwards, you are in a, in a position already to cash flow the next one. So that's a-
Because FEMA is reimbursable too, so now you're, you're double hit with money. So it, it just tells me as part of our plan, we really need to get an understanding of the cash we've got.
Yeah, yes.
Well, shucks, because the Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund has different rules. They sent the town a check for ten and a half million dollars. We made, we got one point seven million dollars in interest sitting in our account.
Mike.
So I was really hoping that the shallow draft fund would work the same way, and we'd get a check for thirty-three million dollars put in our account. But apparently that's not the way it works.
Right. Can we just clarify that?
Sorry, folk.
If, if you remember, and it's actually a very good point, because if people will remember, that was a reimbursable project. They sent us the money, and our town manager was so nervous about it that she documented the heck out of this thing, that we were segregating those funds and segregating the interest and taking care of it, because it was not a front end, it was a reimbursable, which is also why I just asked the question about us getting interest on it, are we allowed to use that? So Mike, to your point, we're very lucky, but to his point, you cannot count on that money coming in from the front end, because that was a mistake by the state. And like I said, I can't remember, Alex, you can tell me, you were worried about that a lot, in terms of documenting everything with the state, making sure we could keep the money, all those types. Is that fair?
Yeah, the money that came in was completely against the agreement. They sent it in advance instead of reimbursement, which is, was unheard of.
Okay. And I have some comments, I don't need any explanations, because we really need to move on, so the meeting can keep on going. I am concerned about the environmental impacts. Since that island has been there since the nineteen eighties and has established wildlife on it, I am concerned that North Carolina wildlife is going to say, hey, it's been there over forty-five years. I'm worried about the per, the permittings and approvals, being able to get everything in a timely manner. I agree with what the mayor said about have, really working with the terminal groin, even though that's not your, your side of the, of the, of the aisle. Also, I think that some of the things, when we bring up 2012, when that was done, when that was engineered and done, it was, the failures were not because of, that the, that the inlet was dredged or the big hole was built there, they were precipitating factors, but they were not the, the main causes. What happened was, that was, that inlet was to be dredged, it did not get the approval for the actual dredging that they wanted to do. A modified dredge, got it out there. Once it was done, the hope was that the uptide delta would collapse upon itself and bring some sand to the shore. And that hole was, was not, that sand scrape, which I'm always against the sand scraping, was way deeper than it should have ever been. I went in it to see how deep it was. It was deep, it was probably over my waist, if I recall correctly, and it was at least probably, again guessing, two to three acres, and it was, should never have been done. Nevertheless, what happened to really screw everything up was, then we had that big storm, and I, I don't think it was sandy, but I can't for the heck of me recall what it was, and that just tore everything all to hell. And it just kind of ruined, ruined it all. Also, I'm, we keep saying the northward drift, and as I Googled while you were talking, I see we can have a northward drift, but quite often in North Carolina, I see that it's more of a southerly drift with the sand. So while I, while I think this is an excellent project, if it can be permitted, if it can be done in a timely manner, and if everything works out with the permitting, the going under the bridge, which is an excellent idea, there's so many good parts about this, but I have some concerns too, but I know you're looking at them, but I just wanted to bring them up, and that's what I've got. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Connie.
Thank you, Chris.
All right.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you coming today.
Yes, ma'am. Glad, glad to be here for all of you. As y'all know, my phone's always on. If you have questions, please give me a buzz, email me, I'm glad to answer.
Will do so. Thank you. Okay, next is Mr. Tim Foster, who is Onslow County Commission's chairman, and he's going to give us an update on county issues.
So since I invited him, Tim, the amount you sent us is five hundred and one thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. That puts us over a million dollars for the, for the fire fund, thank you very much. The money you send to us for the beach every year, the money that you all gave for Ocean City, and by the way, you should get out and look at that beach access, they were very, very grateful for everything that you've done. And I know that on a personal level, you have been an advocate of this town, I think because you used to fish here, hang out when you were younger.
I fish, sorry, William.
So you have a personal interest in this. And just, and just for discussion purposes, real quick, you all instituted your five-year plan at the beginning of the year. That wasn't the impetus. I was invited to the mayor of Holly Ridge's thing when they were laying, or putting out their five-year plan, and Mayor Pete gave me a copy of that, which I think I talked to you about in more of the meetings, and that kind of spurred, would you mind coming in and talking about your planning and stuff? So that was the origination of this, is really what I got. Mayor, their plan was like, like that. So anyway, with that, thanks again, and appreciate that. And also, the Ocean City people wanted to pass on their thanks as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Alderman, I appreciate the opportunity to come in and speak and share. What I'm going to do is probably more along the long of a narrative, to share that with you. No presentation, you don't have to keep up with the, the monitors, but it's just kind of a, a little bit, I'll start just a little bit with, simple, is that I grew up not on the island, but in the southwest community here in Onslow County. And, and every time I come across this bridge, when I see the Atlantic Ocean, or get out of the car, and, and I smell that salt air, it's always like coming to my, my second home, even though I'm twenty-five minutes up the road. You know, and I remember the mornings paddling out on my surfboard, there was a lot more beach back then, that would've been back in the early eighties, when I was coming out and doing that, and catching those, those first waves in the morning, or, or getting here in the evening, and, and doing that. But I grew up coming here on family vacations with my, with my parents and my siblings. We always loved walking the shoreline, we always enjoyed those days of laughter and, and building those memories, memories that come, that generated where I take my family, my wife and my boys will come down. And people always ask, you're only twenty, twenty-five minutes from the island, why do you come spend the week there? Because there's nothing like waking up in the morning and walking out on the beach. There's nothing like walking out of a, a home that you're on, one of the canals, and walking out and getting in your boat and going down the, the intercoastal. But for me, Topsail, or North Topsail was not just a, a beautiful place to visit, it's a part of who I am. So that really builds the, the reason that I, I love North, North Topsail Beach and, and this island. It's special because it is the best of what makes Onslow County unique. The connection between the land, the water, and the people who care about them. You cannot deny that connection, you cannot deny that bond. Serving as a county commissioner in the last couple of years as the chairman, that has deepened that personal connection. It's given me the responsibility, and our board the responsibility, to foster a relationship between Onslow County and North Topsail Beach. It's got to be one that is strong and collaborative. I remember just a few years ago, the boards met, and we looked, how can we support, how can we help? And we figured out that that tourism money could come in and support paying back that, I think it was the USDA loan that was there. So we've committed, that request comes in every year, and we commit to doing that. And we have to be forward-thinking, like you already are. I mean, well over my head, listening to slopes and scraps and, or scrapes and whatever else there, I'm glad somebody knows how to do that, and how to make that come to fruition. If we could figure out a way to make it cheaper, that'd be even better. But that, that's, this relationship is vital between Onslow County and North Topsail Beach. It's not just for the residents, it's not just for the visitors who enjoy the beach, but it's for the economic well-being of the entire county. North Topsail Beach is, is more than a destination, it's truly, it's your home, but it's an economic engine that drives tourism, it supports hundreds of jobs, it attracts new businesses and families to Onslow County. And each year, thousands of visitors come here to enjoy the sand, the surf, the fishing, and something that is unique, the North Topsail Beach, that other beaches don't have, the quiet coastal charm. Those visitors fill the restaurants, shop in our stores, rent vacation homes, book hotel rooms, and spend at our local attractions. That revenue that's generated through the tourism taxes and spending here helps support countywide services, not just North Topsail, but it helps support countywide services from public safety to education. Tourism in this area brings millions of dollars annually. It brings it to our local economy, benefiting not just the beachfront, but the entire county. From Sneed's Ferry to Richlands, from Jacksonville to the rural communities that rely on the shared prosperity. So recognizing that Onslow County has worked hard to commit as a partner to North Topsail Beach, over the past several years, we've taken significant steps, and I think that all started with a joint meeting a few years ago, to strengthen this partnership, where the county has contributed, as we've mentioned earlier, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year through those tourism funds to help support paying off the, the USDA loan. And that loan itself was part of protecting this shoreline, and it was great that I've been a part of the BICEC. Missed several meetings there for a stretch, but it, that, that is important to Onslow County, and the reason I sit on that committee and come and join it, and here recently, I replaced Mark Price on the Topsail Island Shoreline Protection Committee, where it's so, so important to maintain what you have here, because what it means to Onslow County as a whole. We're planning to invest, and as mentioned, I don't know if I need to bring up crosswalks or not, there might be an ask in there somewhere. We're planning to invest one point five million dollars to improve the beach accesses, so that residents, family, visitors and families can enjoy the coastline more easily and safely. What was mentioned earlier, that we have returned some of the property tax rate back to the town, that has helped with the fire services, over five hundred thousand dollars has come back, and, and I believe some of that's probably been used to help build the new, new fire department, which is, is coming along, and probably not as fast as y'all would like it to come along, but it is, it's going to be awesome that that is here. And that, those are things that we have to keep in mind, is that giving your, your local government the resources to invest in services and infrastructure that keeps the community strong. And we want to maintain that relationship and continue that collaboration in being good partners with you. Having provided over five hundred thousand dollars, those services, because we know public safety's not negotiable, and when the people that want to visit and vacation here, and they know there's a commitment not only from North Topsail, but from the county as well, then people will continue to pick North Topsail Beach as a destination of choice. You mentioned earlier, the contribution to Ocean City, the beach access is there, the Jazz Festival that takes place. See, we, we want to recognize that history, we want to understand that, how important the culture of the community is there, that enriches the entire county, and draws visitors who want to experience something truly, truly special. The investments are not just numbers on a page, they're, they represent a shared vision for progress, one where we recognize when Topsail, North Topsail Beach thrives, all of Onslow County benefits. We also know that growth continues to be strong, sometimes that's a detriment, but we have to find a way to balance that. But the greatest growth is taking place in this area, the Stump Sound area of Onslow County. That growth brings new opportunities, it brings new jobs, more housing, if no one has noticed along 210, how much has gone up along there, or have sat in traffic and been able to admire it for minutes on end of what you would like just to be able to get back to your home or to, to the beach to enjoy that as a visitor. It's building stronger businesses, where we need more infrastructure, services, and then leadership that keeps pace. That's why we have been in talks with our board, that we're exploring the establishment of satellite county offices in this area, so citizens can access county services closer to home. And that is part of the broader commitment to meeting the needs of growing communities in North Topsail and Stump Sound are these growing communities, both on the mainland and along the coast. We don't want everyone to have to drive back to, to Jacksonville to have to take care of some of these services. We want to ensure that we have EMS station, that when someone on the, on the island calls 911, that EMS is there to support North Topsail Fire. We want to make sure that our volunteers have the ability to service this island. And that's one of the reasons that we're currently working on a strategic fire plan, to make it more efficient, more, more, more productive, and that is, we've already picked a, a company that is helping draft that plan. We've got representatives from out, throughout the county that was on that, and all of our volunteer fire departments and fire departments will be involved in the development of that plan. So that on, doesn't only ensure safety and, and quality service in one area, it's going to take it from the county line on the other side of Holly Ridge, to the county line on the other side of Swansburg, to the county line on the other side of Richland, Richlands, and hopefully include some county MOUs to support as well, and it takes us right through the gates, main gates, and the back gates to Lejeune with that service plan as well. And to guide these decisions, this is the, the part that I, for our board has spoke about quite a bit in the last several years, is, we've built budgets year to year. And we always talked about, we really need to build budgets, or not year to year, but the budgets are built on what we want to accomplish over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, but do it in a five-year increments. So to guide those decisions, we developed a five-year strategic plan, which will be the foundation for our budgeting and our policymaking. A strategic plan that is essential, because it keeps us focused on our priorities. It helps us balance growth. It ensures we invest in projects that have a long-term positive impact, pretty much along the lines of one and a half million dollars going into the beach accesses, that, that is a long-term commitment, that is going to be a long-term commitment to folks that come and visit this island to maintain the, the, the economic engine that we, we want it to continue to be, but at a balance. We don't want it to destroy your homes either, because you, you stay here year-round. It provides transparency, so citizens can see how their tax dollars are being spent, and it gives us goals, measurable goals, that we can work together, or work toward together. When we plan strategically, we prioritize beach access, storm resiliency, infrastructure, improvements, public safety, and economic development in a way that benefit both the beach and the county as a whole. North Topsail Beach has always been, always been, as I told you earlier, growing up, fishing and shrimping in the intercoastal, surf fishing. You know, I don't know if, how many, how many of y'all have been here a long, long time, but Paradise Pier, Scotch Bonnet Pier, and all those iconic things that have been on this island, those were a part of the jewels of North Topsail Beach. And those things are being replaced by new things that are so important to Onslow County. The success impacts our hotels and restaurants, our small businesses, our schools, and even our property values, which we are in the process of twenty, probably, there's going to be an increase in property values, which is going to cause us to have to adjust the property tax rate accordingly. It's important to our school, or our, maintaining a vibrant and resilient beach, a powerful economic driver. It creates jobs, supports recreation, attracts visitors, who in turn support the entire county economy. That's why it's critical we continue to nurture the relationship between Onslow County and North Topsail Beach. And looking ahead, we believe we have an opportunity to take this relationship to the next level by working together, town and county. We need to look at scheduling some more board meetings together and having those conversations. We believe taking it to the next level will allow us to continue to invest in sustainable tourism and shoreline protection, expand public access to points to the beach that are open and welcoming, continue to be open and welcoming to families, improve our emergency services- services to keep residents and visitors safe, and explore collaborative projects that boost business development and protect our natural environment. This is the future that we all would like to envision, a North Topsail Beach that stands strong as a premier destination for visitors and a beloved community for residents, and Onslow County that recognizes that its coastline is one of the greatest in the area, one of our greatest assets. We've come a long way. We've come a long way in building trust and collaboration, but there's more we can do. The good news is we have momentum, we have a plan, and we have shared purpose. Together, we can keep building this partnership that honors the past, meets our challenges today, and embraces tomorrow's opportunities. I appreciate you welcoming here today. I'm honored to serve not only as the chairman of Onslow County Board, but as someone whose personal history and love for this beach keep me deeply invested in the future. I look forward to the progress we'll make together as we continue to protect our shoreline, protect your homes, protect your way of life, and protect the economic engine that North Topsail Beach is to Onslow County, where we all benefit. When North Topsail Beach is successful, Onslow County is successful. When Onslow County is successful, North Topsail Beach is successful. So that ends that. I enjoy doing it in a narrative, because I hope I hit all the points. Growth is one of the toughest things that we're facing right now, a double-edged sword. We've got to figure out what the balance is. People have discovered your wonderful little beach. People have have discovered Onslow County. We're at 215,000 people in Onslow County, and over the next 20-plus years, we look to go around 260, 270,000 people. Not sure where they're going to go, but the projections are, they're coming. Thank you very much, and I appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you.
Just one other thing real quick before you leave. Two things. One is I did talk to Mr. Chestnut, and he and they are very pleased with what you guys have done. So I want this at their homeowners association meeting. Nice. There you go. With one caveat, he's talking about the EMS thing. We have first dibs. You guys brought up, they want to use the the old Pluris thing to put that in there. And he and Royce brought up, they wanted that, and I said, I brought it up six months ago, they wanted to get first dibs on that. So it's clear, I hope, at least we'll work together to do that.
Yes, yes. I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
Any questions, anyone, or?
No, nothing.
All right. Thank you all very much.
All right. I know we have an open forum. Do we have anybody?
We have one sign up. That is Mark Barefoot.
All right. Mark Barefoot, 246 Sandpiper. First of all, I'd say thank you for coming and understanding the economic impact this beach provides to the county. Get a lot of feedback on where our monies are going. So it's refreshing to hear you let us know how much we mean to the county. Again, give me 20 or 30 seconds. I'm not going to be running a huge political run right here. I just want to make sure that I inform all the citizens of North Topsail Beach that have contacted the Onslow County Board of Elections, have signed a letter of intent to run for alderman. So this election, Mark Barefoot, is a write-in candidate. So if you choose to vote for me, please write me in, and I look forward to serving you. My life is a little different now than it has been for the last 10 years, so we'll see what happens. Moving forward, I'd like to say thank you for doing this crosswalks. It's been long, long, long overdue. I think I brought it up at St. Regis seven or eight years ago. I brought up Seagull especially, and that was before it was two or three times the size it is now, really too fast going through there. I recommended speed bumps because it is our road. I was shot down, but long story short, thank you for pushing that. I'd also like for you to understand, we know there's going to be difficulties dealing with the DMT, so it's going to be a dance that's going to take everybody's needs to be in step, because I think it is a, you can pass in either direction at some of these crosswalks or some of these beach accesses. So they'll have to change that to no passing zones and everything else. Both Seagull crosswalks, I think, are needed. The four-way around Seagull, definitely, need to take in water runoff, water puddling in effect, because everybody knows when it would rain, you're not going to walk the way you want to walk. You're going to walk the long way, keep your feet from getting wet. Recommend rumble strips as well. I don't know what they cost. That's an effective way to slow people down, get their attention. But I would like to say thank you for finally seeing some fruits of that happen. As a fireman for several years here, worked as a parking lot attendant, so I've dealt with daytrippers, tourists, residents, everybody. And their biggest concern was, this place is a nightmare. So hopefully, getting some of these put in, we can maintain that 45-speed limit. We'll see what happens. So that is a concern. The other part is, while we're talking traffic, we'd love to be able to make a left-hand turn coming out here. I don't know if it's traffic circle, what the solution is, but Saturday from 10 o'clock to 3 o'clock, the worker bees, they cannot make money because they're sitting in traffic. All right. Thank you for your time. Thank you for what you do. Appreciate each one of you. Happy day.
Thank you, Mark.
And I know Alderman Plettel, is there anybody else that wants to speak? Yeah, go ahead, Kip. And then Connie, if you need to go.
Yeah, I'll scoot out here.
Sorry. I wanted to thank Chairman Foster also from the Ocean City Beach Citizens Council for the for the support of the Jazz Festival. I'm the vice president of the Ocean City Beach Citizens Council, so I echo what Alderman Grant said. Chris Huckabee also want to commend you for your thoughtful review and sound recommendation regarding the crosswalks and stop signs. Again, Ocean City Beach is bordered on both sides by two of your recommendations, and we sincerely appreciate all efforts to reduce speed and enhance safety for pedestrians and bicycles to Long Island Drive. As a reminder, back in May of 2024, we actually did have a pedestrian fatality there. And although it wasn't related to crossing the street, it was a pedestrian right there in front of the Surf City Campgrounds. So it underscores the urgent need for enhanced safety measures to better protect residents, property owners, and our visitors. Before my partial retirement in law enforcement, I served as a records officer for the police department, and I have a strong working knowledge of records retentions. Based on that experience and the Town's Resolution 2024-02, the adoption of the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources Division of Archives and Records Retention and Disposition Schedule for Local Government Agencies, I had some questions. The board made a very important distinction that the appropriate schedules and applicable codes need to be denoted prior to these destructions so that everybody's more well-informed. Will a copy or summary of those destruction logs or inventories be made available to the public? Okay. We also have to be careful when we're evaluating public records as historical value. I hope that the the state archives were at least consulted prior to any sort of arbitrary determination of what is considered historically of historical value. But I just caution that gray area, there are ramifications outlined in North Carolina general statutes. So those are just a couple of my observations. Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, as well.
Thanks, Kip. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay. Then we are going to move on to the attorney's report.
Nothing to report, Meta Mayor, thank you.
Okay. And then for the mayor's report, I just want to thank everybody for coming out today and hopefully viewing online. The debates did come up, and I did just want to make a statement about the debates. Certainly, I hope, there's there's two coming up. I hope that people are able to attend at least one of them. I do understand that Alderman Olshewski is moderating tomorrow night's debate as...
Facilitating.
Facilitating, okay. Facilitating as an individual citizen. She is not facilitating as a town representative. She is not endorsing any candidate, and neither is the town of North Topsail Beach through this process. So I just wanted to go on record, make sure that that was clear. Basically, the town is offering the room and the streaming services or the taping services, whatever we're doing with that. So that is all I had. Connie's already gone.
Start over.
Yep, go on last.
Yep, I'll start with Mr. We're not going to argue about it. Everybody is going to get a chance to speak, okay? So Alderman Benson.
Do you want to go first? No. Oh, that's why I said we usually go reverse order each time.
Connie threw me off today.
Well, I think we had a good meeting today. We had a lot of good information from Chris and from Chairman Foster. I don't know how many people are watching online, but anyway, Chairman Foster, I'm sorry you're going to have to hear what I have to say, because it's not very, not very good. But we just mentioned the debate that's scheduled for tomorrow night. I received a letter, an email about to propose second candidate debate and wrote the following reply. I think you organizers might want to consider discussing the need for a second debate for the following reasons. Your debate would be a duplication of the chambers meet the candidates night five days later. Since the chamber event will be live streamed, why repeat what the candidate said five days earlier? No doubt there would be duplication of questions between the two events. The candidates are not going to change their position in five days. There's 933 registered voters in North Topsail Beach, and they're just going to question why you're having two debates five days apart, because the chamber is not really a debate, it's a meet the candidate. But you are proposing a debate. In my mind, the chamber-sponsored event takes precedence, as it was formally announced several weeks ago, and the chamber is a nonprofit, non-government organization promoting business and tourism on Topsail Island environments. They are hosting the same type of event in the other two island towns. So in the event that you do decide to go forward, which you have, I had several suggestions for your debate. You divided debate into two one-hour segments, but there's only two mayor candidates, and there were four, now five candidates for aldermen. You mentioned during the questions that the candidates will have two minutes for rebuttal, like we're going to disagree on on solutions. But I'm sure I'm in the with Rick on many of the issues, so I really don't see why we're 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 having, you know, a debate. And you indicated how the pre-submitted questions will be submitted before the debate. Didn't indicate how they're going to be submitted, only that a moderator, and that was the word that was used in the letter to me, will select the questions as soon as possible. I asked you to send me the name of the moderator and the email so that we could have my neighbors and my supporters submit questions to the moderator. But also keep in mind that the town attorney explicitly said at least one board meeting, at the last board meeting, the topic was discussed that the moderator should not be a town-elected official due to potential conflict and interest in bias. And the mayor just said that the elected official is going to be serving as a private citizen. Okay? So since you didn't, none of these debate procedures were addressed, and your follow-up email to me, I decline to debate with you tomorrow night. If you and the audience want to hear a side-by-side answer of our of the questions that this community has, then please show up next Tuesday night, October 7th, here in the Town Hall. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir.
As all of you know, we are in an election season. So for the town of North Topsail Beach, there will be a vote for aldermen. Citizens will be allowed to vote for three aldermen off the ballot. The mayor is up for election, and you will be voting for one person. Again, people can do early voting, and you can do that at the Onslow County Board of Elections, which is at 246 Georgetown Road in Jacksonville. They are also opening up the Board of Elections early, so from like 10:16, 10:17, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM for voting. I won't read the whole schedule, but it is out on their website. Tomorrow, we have the opportunity to have a debate with our candidates for mayor and Board of Aldermen here at Town Hall from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. I will be facilitating this debate as a private citizen with a background in mediation and an individual capacity with Ricky's help on the tech components to stream this to our YouTube channel live. The debate on Thursday, October 2nd at 6:00 PM, and the Greater Topsail Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Meet the Candidates event on October 7th at 6:30 PM are not town-sponsored events, nor do they reflect any endorsement by the town of any candidate. The purpose of these events is to bring focus to the election and to encourage voters to meet the candidates and become familiar with the issues before our town. Both the debate and the Meet the Candidates event will be livestreamed and then made available on the town's YouTube channel. The format for tomorrow's event will be reviewing the rules of the debate, having candidates introduce themselves and their background and qualifications. Then the candidates will each have time to discuss two issues the town faces, how they see an approach to resolve. After that, we'll go to citizens submitting questions, live questions from people in the audience, and then closing remarks from each candidate. We'll have about an hour for the mayor debate, and then we'll take a short break and have about another hour for the Board of Aldermen, folks. You may submit questions prior to the debate to ntb25debate@gmail.com, or submit questions at the debate itself. The right to vote, the right for citizens to be heard, the election process itself is fundamental to our form of government. I look forward to facilitating and hope to see many of you here tomorrow night and on October 7th. Let us not take our freedoms for granted. Thank you to all of you who attend our meetings on a consistent basis. Please take your permanent resident, please tell your permanent resident neighbors also that our election is on November 4th. Thank you. That's my report, Mayor.
Okay. Alderman Grant?
So I get to go, I thought we were going to reverse the order from last time. I think Tom's up.
No, Tom had asked previously, before I spoke to you, if he could go last.
So before the meeting when you and I spoke, he spoke before then?
Yes, he did.
Really? I was here first. That's fine. Actually, since we were talking about not, I've been accused of not politicking in the past, I was going to report on what happened with Onwasa. When Frankie came in and discussed it last week, they actually went back and they actually found another meter. So good news is, we don't have 60% loss. We only have 25% loss, but it's still a loss. They've also gotten in the town, we look at the numbers here, I believe they've already found almost 100 leaks that they have been repairing during that time. So very pleased with that. Attending the county meetings have been good. I think their planning process is very good. I guess since since Mike brought up the debates, I will be there tomorrow night. I will quote him from a great comment that he made in August, "I'll debate anytime, anywhere." I will be there tomorrow night. I've got HOAs scheduled going forward if you need anything from me. Like I said, and keep in mind, and again, the county things in the past have been more like a coffee klatch, okay? They're not, they're not a debate. It's an introduction, that's what they call it. I think we need a debate because we have so many issues before this town, and Chris just went through a project that's almost $50 million. Those are things we need to get out in front of you and be transparent about. I will see you tomorrow night.
Thanks, Mayor. First of all, Tim, appreciate you being here. Thanks for everybody showing up. I got a couple of announcements real quick and then and some other stuff. First of all, Saturday is the Real Housewives of Topsail Island Bike Ride for Breast Cancer Awareness. It's a good, it's a good event. It's a lot of fun, even if you do do it on an e-bike. Second thing is, October the 23rd marks the anniversary of the Beirut bombing, and there's always a ceremony over at the Memorial Gardens in Jacksonville, which I'll be attending at 10:30 that morning. 10:30 that morning. We lost 241 service members that day. Most of them were Marines from Camp Lejeune. I want to update everyone on Cobra. Had a meeting in Washington last Thursday, September 25th. This thing flew up really quickly. Been working with our federal lobbyists to try to get it put together. I got a call the previous Thursday, September the 18th, and said, hey, can you be up here the 25th because we've got meetings scheduled for you? Said, okay, yep. I was actually still out on the road and I was doing all the stuff I needed to do on my tablet to try to get ready. But I met with everybody we always meet with, Ray Celeste out of Congress from Murphy's office, reps from Senators Bud and Tillis' offices, and the House Natural Resources Committee on Water, Wildlife and Fisheries. And I'll go through that, those real quick. Ray Celeste, it was that the next step for, is for the bill to be marked up by the subcommittee. And basically said, you know, we're, we're keeping an eye on it for you and if you need anything, let us know, but you really need to talk to subcommittee. So we did. Met with the reps from Senators Bud and Tillis' office. They're looking now to try to, they're working on trying to get a hearing scheduled similar to what we had on the House side for the Senate bill. Natural Resources Committee on Wild, Wildlife and Fisheries, met with the new staff director, Rich O'Connell, who replaced Anique Miller, the staff director that we've been working with so closely up until now. She was the one that came down here a couple of years ago on vacation. Alice and I took her out, showed her around. Discussion revolved around trying to get more bipartisan support from the subcommittee members for the bill. This is key. The last bill was approved and moved forward out of subcommittee and was scheduled to go to the House floor, but it was moved out of the subcommittee along party lines. That's the killer. You don't have, you don't have bipartisan support, you can pretty well guess that it's not going to go any further. They're right now refining the bill's language, working with Murphy's office, his folks, to try to get it palatable for everything, everybody, okay? Another thing that they told the two folks from Water, Natural Resources, Water, Wildlife and Fisheries mentioned was really, another key point was that we need support from the Fish and Wildlife Service for any changes we want to make. Which brings us to our final meeting of the day. I had 30 minutes with Brian Esvik. He is the newly appointed director of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and his chief of staff. There were just five of us in the room and it was like this.
Yep.
Okay. It was, it was chief, the chief, the director, two of them from the Ferguson Group and me. He'd never heard about any of it, he was brand new. We went through the entire argument on the issue, how we were improperly placed due to poor analysis, using aerial photos that didn't disclose a full complement of infrastructure that was in place prior to Cobra's enactment in 82. How the infrastructure doesn't have to be buildings, as Congress has previously ruled that roads, power lines, water and sewer lines constitute infrastructure. I explained that we needed the support of the Fish and Wildlife Service to get the bill passed. He asked a lot of good questions and one of which I thought was the most interesting was, if we took these areas out of Cobra tomorrow, what, aside from NFIP and federal mortgage programs eligibility, what would change? And I looked at him and I said, pretty much nothing, when you get down to it, because it's not like we're going to take a bunch of land that's undeveloped and start building condos and houses, because we're right now 90 to 95% built out. I also stated that one of the reasons we're already built out is because there was the full complement of infrastructure in place prior to Cobra being enacted. It all goes back around to that, okay? I explained how we have a 65-foot concrete bridge leading out to the island, to the town from the mainland and goes right by practically our town hall, that was built back in 1968. Which supports, again, the premise that we were developable, okay? And that now we're built out. So in the end, the director stated that he and his agency would conduct a full review of our situation. He stated they would take on a fresh look at all of it and look at the facts. Interestingly enough, he's retired Army National Guard Brigadier General, his chief of staff's also a retired Army Colonel, I believe he's a Colonel. I was able to tell chief of staff how Army's really an acronym, stands for aren't ready for Marines yet. And he countered with the fact that he was born at the Camp Pendleton Naval Hospital in Camp Pendleton, California Marine Base, and grew up in a Marine family. So we had a little bit of camaraderie there, a little bit of connection. Monday, I got an email from him, from the chief, following up on her visit, which states, "Mr. Leonard, it was a pleasure meeting you last week, sending you this note, so you have a direct line to our director's office. Our internal team has been tasked to look in the topics, look into the topics we covered during the discussion. I hope you and yours had a great weekend." And I think it was very respectfully David McDonald, chief of staff. So my overall impression is that director and his staff are sincere. And given the vibes of the current administration, we'll conduct a thorough look to determine whether or not they can assist us and to what extent with our efforts to get our, our areas out of Cobra. So I was very encouraged by the visit. Board would have known about it if I'd known about it with any more of a, mayor knew, town staff knew because they helped me get, get, get spun up to get there, but it was a very good visit. I think, I think we're really on the right path with Fish and Wildlife because they're the key. Congress is going to do what Fish and Wildlife doesn't want them to do, okay? So that ends that. We'll talk about the debate. I think it's both highly unusual and irregular, and irregular to have a forum orchestrated or sponsored by candidates who are running for office. It's even more orthodox to me for sitting aldermen to serve as a facilitator for an event. I've participated, and I've got a lot to say here that I'm going to cut short. I've participated in local government in our town for many, many years, either as a voter, regular meeting attendee, committee member, or on the boards and aldermen. I've never seen a debate, forum, or whatever name you want to assign to it, sponsored by candidates, or facilitated by a sitting elected official from our town. Never. These events have always been sponsored and moderated by external organizations that are third parties. It's the only way they can truly remain fair and impartial and unbiased. That is a precedence for how things have been done in the past and how I believe they should continue to remain. And while this debate may be legal, it certainly raises ethical, moral and procedural questions. I'm not comfortable with it. Accordingly, I will not be participating or otherwise associated with the event tomorrow night, but I will see everybody on October the 7th in the candidate forum sponsored by the Topsail Chamber, which will be held at 6:30 PM. That concludes my report. And I'm sorry you had to hear that.
Okay. All right. Are we ready to have a motion to go into closed session to consult with our attorney regarding NC General Statute 143-318.11A3, consult with an attorney and personnel about the town maintenance and repair of the Grant Drive Public Pier and Observatory Style Gazebo?
I'll make a motion to do what you just said.
Chip, did you need to add anything to that or was that?
No.
All right, so we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone, for coming.
Regroup and I'm going to ask for a motion to come out of closed session.
I'll make a motion to come out of closed session.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So I believe what we're going to talk about today is the request for repair and maintenance of the Grant Drive Public Pier and Observatory gazebo. Ms. Hill.
I'm going to spare you from reading from my notes and tell you, give you the overview off the top of my head. And so back when the developer was planning, submitting his plans to the town for Dolphin Shores, there was a requirement to provide access both to the ocean side and to the sound side, which were dedicated and included in those recorded plats. There was some confusion, like there's no confusion on the ocean side, but there was some confusion on the sound side where you have the pier, the gazebo. There were originally plans to have a ten boat slip, ten unit boat slip at the very end that they considered private and an amenity for the new property owners. So they had proposed that the HOA take over or do the maintenance and repairs since there was a private component to that. When they submitted their camera permit, there was about a foot of water out there. I guess everything looks good on paper. And so Division of Coastal Management received a lot of input from some other agencies and was unable to approve the boat slip. And so it was just the pier and the gazebo that was approved by KAMA in, I think it was KAMA Permit 5999. And those were subsequently constructed. So that's kind of what has brought us where we're at today is the confusion over ownership. The attachments that are included in the report contain the recorded plats, the restrictive covenants, and board meeting dialogue leading up to their motion. So hopefully it's clear that it is a dedicated public beach access, dedicated public gazebo. And so as such, I would recommend and request that the board of, I'll read it. I give you, I give you all that. Yeah, sorry. So my recom, my recommendation would be that the town accept responsibility for the repair and maintenance of the public pier and gazebo on Grant Drive at Dolphin Shores. I also want to go back and include in the response from the president of the HOA, there was an email and I'll include that as attachment 12 in the staff report where they have, "Thank you for taking the time to explain Dolphin Shores' public-private access location at Grant Street, including the history of ownership since its inception." He presented the proposal to Dolphin Shores HOA Board and they, they have voted to allow the town in North Topsail Beach to proceed with the repairs and maintenance of the walkway and gazebo at their expense as requested. So there's, just to let you know that there's not a conflict between the Dolphin Shores HOA and my recommendation to you today.
Okay. So we have a motion that I'm going to see if Mayor Protem would read.
Make a motion that the town, the town accept responsibility for the repair and maintenance of the public pier and gazebo on Grant Drive at Dolphin Shores. That's the motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, any discussion?
Question. So we're taking over the, just looking at the email from Mr. Erhard and said, "Thank you for taking the time, blah, blah, blah. Since I presented your proposal to Dolphin Shores HOA Board, we vote to allow that North Town, North Topsail Beach should proceed with repairs and maintenance and walkway and gazebo of the walkway and gazebo at their expenses requested." Is there an understanding that we're going to repair it, replace it for public use? Do we have somewhere, someplace where it's public use?
It's, it's on all the attachments that I've sent that have been recorded.
Okay.
And there was a.
Wanted it for the record.
When I initially spoke to him, when I initially spoke to him, he said that there had been, he relayed that there had been some disgruntlement, disappointment, dissatisfaction with someone giving away the, the beach access and the gazebo and the pier. And I explained to him that no one ever gave away anything, that it was the developer in accordance with the ordinance for a public dedication.
Very good.
And that's, and, and I believe that that's whenever he says that he spoke to the board and relayed that information. And they came back and said.
Good, Deb. Thank you. That answered my question.
And I would defer to counsel, but I believe the easement does that for us anyway.
Right.
That we have, we've got the legal right. This is, this is a public easement for us to use regardless.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So the issue is, I think the issue raised is, is resolved through the language of the easement, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect.
And Deb, when, speaking on this, this is for the existing easement structure, whatever. This, you know, once the town takes it over.
Nothing new.
Yeah, there's nothing new. We're going to maintain what's there, is my understanding. And you're.
Yes, Alderman, because they, they can't go on to our easement and start adding things.
You're saying from Dolphin Shores, not the town.
Correct. I just want to make sure they understand this is now our responsibility to maintain and go forward, but they are not going to be able to go and add on to that and then add on to our maintenance costs.
Correct.
Just real quick before we leave then, as I understand it though, if, if we want to make improvements to this.
We can. We're the easement holder.
We can make improvements.
Of course.
It's them that can't make improvements.
Correct. That's right.
If, if the town manager comes back and says, "Hey, you know, it, it's kind of remind me of, of this building. We came back and the insurance paid to rebuild the same thing." If in the view of the manager and her team that there's a difference, different layout that we might want, we're free to do that on our own, correct?
Yes. Within the, within the easement. Correct.
And, and as, as permitted and, as permitted by Division of Coastal Management. So. And, and as permitted and, as permitted by Division of Coastal Management. So-
My whole point was nothing keeps us from enhancing it or doing something. I think her comment was a good one, which is we don't want them enhancing it and we're responsible for it, but that doesn't stick with us. It only sticks with them.
And the only comment that, the only, the only comment that I would like to say is that it was always public, that the easement, the pier, the gazebo, and dedicated, and it's in the shape that it's in because nobody was maintaining it.
Okay.
And so, so, you know, if we, if we don't take it over and adopt it, then the community loses, and there's a lot of people in the neighborhood that, that do use that. So.
So we're formalizing what we already knew. Okay.
All right. So we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.